Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Christine Miller. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Cepeda. Representing District Six, Chris Bowles. Representing District Seven, Joshua Wostel. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Back. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning and welcome to the November 5th, 2025 regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh compassionate heavenly Father, I come to you today thanking you for this day and a new month. As we honor our veterans this month, we thank you for their service. Their service, they protected our country and they came back home safely. Lord, I ask that you would bless our first responders throughout this county and throughout this nation. Bless our meeting that it would be pleasing in your sight. And as we go toward the end of the month for Thanksgiving, we ask you to bless those families who would have food on the table and there would be some families and individuals who not. But we ask that you would take care of them and provide them a meal somewhere in our county. I ask that you bless the leadership of this board and our administration, that the items that we discuss today will be pleasing in your sight. In your holy name I pray, amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. This morning, we have two very special proclamations to be presented, and the first one will be
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With Tanila Dupree, President of Gamma Theta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, please join me at the podium. Good morning and welcome. Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated is steep in history, tradition, and bold works that have changed lives for the better in Hillsborough County areas and far beyond. Founded in 1908 at Howard University, the sorority has been instrumental in the success of college-educated women who dedicated themselves to community service. Our community is fortunate that Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated has a powerful presence here. This year, the organization's Gamma Theta Omega Chapter is celebrating its 85th anniversary. That deserves a round of applause. I am proud to honor this amazing organization and its distinguished members today with this proclamation. And my aide Wanda will present you the proclamation. And it reads, "Whereas Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated is an international service organization founded on the campus of Howard University in Washington, DC on January the 15th, 1908, and it is the oldest Greek letter organization established by African-American college-educated women led by International President and CEO, Danette Anthony Reed. And whereas on December 7th, 1940, the Gamma Theta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated became the second graduate chapter to be chartered in the state of Florida. And whereas the newly formed chapter, GTO, consisted of seven women from Tampa, Clearwater, and Bradenton, Edith Bennett Adams, Blanche Hamilton Curtis, Vivian Lester Hendry, Dorothy L. Maxwell, Estella Miles, Eloise Bailey Walker, and Margaret L. Blake. Vivian Hendry served as the First Chapter President, and Maude E. Brown served as the Regional Director of AKA. And whereas GTO celebrates 85 years of service to all mankind by providing programs of service to Miss Teenage Tampa of Alpha Kappa Alpha Scholarship Pageant, Emerging Young Leaders, and the Precious Pearls Youth Groups, just to name a few, for children, youth, and families, and sponsors two undergraduate chapters, Zeta Upsilon at the University of South Florida, and Sigma Nu at the University of Tampa. And whereas GTO celebrates 85 years of racing toward greatness, stilettos on the ground for scholarships, it is 400 member-strong and led by President Tanila D. Dupree, and continue to provide relevance and impactful programs to girls and boys in the Tampa Bay community, and is a beacon of light. And whereas GTO celebrates 85 years and recognize living legends in their chapter. As I call your name, please come forward. Carolyn How Stewart, 28th International President of AKA. Marsha Lewis Brown, 17th South Atlantic Regional Director of AKA. Ms. Stewart just walked in. Come on up, International President, 28, Carolyn How Stewart. The Honorable Peggy A. Quintz, former Supreme Justice, State of Florida. The Honorable Barbara Twine Thomas, Hillsborough County Judge. The Honorable Gwendolyn Miller, former City of Tampa Councilwoman, and yours truly, Gwen Myers, Hillsborough County Commissioner. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare December 7th, 2025, as Gamma Theta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha 85th Anniversary Day Celebration in Hillsborough County, and congratulates the GTO chapter on their anniversary and commends them for their service to the community, executed this fifth day of November, 2025. Madam President, would you like to say a few words? Let's show some love. Good morning. To the Board of County Commissioners, and certainly to Commissioner Myers, Gamma Theta Omega Chapter, we're here with our royalty, our AKA royalty. Most importantly, Gamma Theta Omega Chapter is here to serve, and to serve all mankind, and we have been doing it steadfastly for almost 85 years. And by God's grace, His help and mercy, we will continue to do it for another 85 years. We thank you for this honor, and by your, the power invested in me, I want to say we will continue to go greater. Thank you. Members of AKA, come on back quickly, because we have board meeting to discuss. We're going to take a picture. Come on back, all the way back to the board. Nicole, all members of Alpha Kappa Alpha, Nicole Travis.
Up here, and three, two, one. And one more right here, three, two, one.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. And now Commissioner Cohen will present our next proclamation.
Well, good morning, everyone. My proclamation this morning takes us to a little more serious note. I would like to ask Dr. Sam Fry Aldenhoven, widely known as Dr. Frey, to please join me at the podium. Good morning. Hand you this. Thank you for joining us. I am proud to present this proclamation declaring January as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. This is an important recognition because there have been tremendous strides in early detection methods and treatments that can help combat this disease. Moffitt Cancer Center is a world-class healthcare facility that is a leader in discovering groundbreaking methods to detect cancers early. The center's innovative outreach includes the Furman Family Mobile Lung Cancer Screening Unit, which brings low-dose computed tomography screenings, also known as CT screenings, directly to the public. I am proud to present this proclamation this morning in honor of all cancer survivors and their families, as well as our dedicated medical professionals who work tirelessly in the fight against this disease. And my friend Ed Cutler is here this morning representing many lung cancer survivors throughout our community. At this time, I'm going to read the proclamation. It says, "Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among both men and women in the United States, claiming the lives of approximately 1,680 people each day, which is nearly equal to breast, prostate, and colorectal cancer combined. And whereas approximately 15,580 Floridians will learn they have lung cancer in 2025, and only 15.8% of Floridians considered high-risk for developing lung cancer receive annual lung screenings. And whereas more than half of people with lung cancer die within one year of being diagnosed, and when lung cancer is detected early in a localized stage, there is over a 63% chance of five-year survival. Whereas Moffitt Cancer Center has expanded access to lung cancer screenings through the launch of the Furman Family Mobile Lung Cancer Screening Unit, the first of its kind in Florida, which brings low-dose computed tomography, CT screening directly to communities, breaking down barriers related to geography, transportation, and access to care. And whereas Moffitt Cancer Center is committed to providing education, screenings, and innovative treatments to reduce the lung cancer burden through collaborative efforts with partner organizations, continued use of mobile screenings, and research to advance care and treatment options for patients. And whereas Hillsborough County is committed to the elimination of lung cancer and supports early detection in its residents and the advancement of clinical research in this field, and it encourages public and private efforts to enhance research funding and education programs that address lung cancer and promote wide access to the latest screening and treatments, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare November, 2025, as Lung Cancer Screening Awareness Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to raise public awareness about the disease, low-dose CT screenings, and voluntary activities to support tobacco cessation. Executed this fifth day of November, 2025, signed by all seven of the Board of County Commissioners. And Dr. Frey, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. My name is Sam Fry Aldenhoven, a thoracic surgeon at Moffitt Cancer Center. Thank you, Commissioners, for bringing light to this issue and your continued support. Lung cancer is America's deadliest cancer. It claims more lives in the US each year than can fill up Raymond James Stadium twice over. Despite this, it gets less attention than a lot of other cancers, probably due to stigma that it's only related to people who have smoked in the past. But the reality is, is that lung cancer can affect anyone. We're fortunate that our community has close connections with the world-class cancer institute and Moffitt Cancer Center. Where we're leading, we're pioneering novel surgical treatments, innovative therapies that are transforming lung cancer care. It's really, excuse me, strong community partnerships that are on display today give these innovations improving outcomes and shaping what lung cancer care should be today and around the world. This proclamation honors survivors, families, and patients. It honors the researchers and clinicians that are advancing this work. It also recognizes the community leaders that are helping getting attention to this nationwide. So thank you very much.
I want to acknowledge our former county attorney, Chip Fletcher, is here, as well as some other folks from Moffitt. And at this time, we are going to go up and take a picture?
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Bonnie, you want to review the change of the agenda?
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. You have one item for board consideration pursuant to Rule 13 of your Rules of Order. This is by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, Item F5, to approve the allocation of $40,000 of unexpended fiscal year nonprofit budget originally intended for mentors for Hillsborough County veterans to three other nonprofit organizations. You have two items that have either been deferred or deleted. The first one is Item A75. This is to approve the fiscal year '26 Budget Amendment Resolution and carry forward funding from fiscal year '25 to '26 adopted budget for the Florida Department of Environmental Protection Petroleum Contamination Site Cleanup Contract. That item has been deferred to December 17th. Item F4 has been deleted. It was a 1015 time certain. It was to approve the fiscal year Budget Amendment Resolution to realign $2 million of countywide construction funds from the West Tampa Community Resource Center project and $1 million of BP oil spill funds from the historic Mosley Homestead renovation project. You have three items that have been removed from consent for discussion or questions all by Commissioner Wostel. First one is Item A7, is to accept and approve the award allocation of the Community Arts Impact Grant Program funds in the amount of $105,815 for 17 awards as recommended by the Arts Council of Hillsborough County. Item A8 was to accept and approve the award allocation of the Cultural Development Grant Program funds in the amount of $284,338.39 for 19 awards as recommended by the Arts Council of Hillsborough County. And Item A24, to approve and adopt the Board Policy on Events and Parades Process by which private organizations may host and operate events such as road races and parades on Hillsborough County Rites of Way and setting out the procedures under which such events must operate. You have several items for time certain. The first one is Item D1 at 10 o'clock. It's to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial amendment to the Plan Year '25 Annual Action Plan and close the public comment period. Item D2 at 10 o'clock is to conduct a public hearing to consider amending Hillsborough County Code of Ordinances to eliminate the 15-minute wait time and authorization required needed prior to towing, removal, or immobilization. Item G2 at 1015, which is related to Item B3, is to receive a report on the African-American Arts and Cultural Center presented by Facilities Management and Real Estate Services and the Tampa Bay African-American Arts and Cultural Center, Inc. Item B3, also at 1015, related to Item G2, is to approve the naming rights agreement with the 501(c)(3) nonprofit Tampa Bay African-American Arts and Cultural Center, Inc., which allows them to enter into donor agreements for the African-American Arts and Cultural Center project in order to raise $60 million in private funds for construction and other facility-related costs. Item G3, which is related to Item B4, is at 1030. That is to receive a report on the establishment of a fire rescue peak unit section. Item B4, which is related to Item G3, is also at 1030, to approve and establish 48 new paramedic and staff positions to allow fire rescue to create a new peak rescue division that will support and increase capacity in managing medical calls and medical transports. 11:45 is a recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Can we have a motion? Motion, Commissioner Wostel, second Commissioner Miller, please accord your vote on change of the agenda.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Okay, the Board will go on the public comment portion of the agenda. The Board welcomes comments from any citizen about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to Board members. However, at the same time, it is requested when you address the Board that comments are not made directly at staff or the Board, but rather the issues. Set aside 45 minutes this morning. The Chair will call you in the order in which you've signed up. Each person will be given three minutes. And also, we have a couple of individuals that have signed up for F4, just in case you're unaware that item was deleted from the agenda. First three speakers, Ella Coffey, followed by Marcia Mejia, and then Brett Snowden. Ella Coffey here, about Marcia. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Marcia Mejia, here on behalf of the Office of Congresswoman Kathy Castor with the following statement. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your service to our community. It was with great pride, humility, and honor to have announced in 2023 that I championed and secured $1 million to help make the African-American Arts and Cultural Center a reality. My friend, Hillsborough County Commissioner Gwen Myers, shared her vision with me for a center in West Tampa, one of the eight original African-American neighborhoods that would also inspire justice, hope, and love for one another for all those who visited. A vibrant African-American arts and cultural center that would be part of the Renaissance of this West River area. I am pleased that Hillsborough County continues to move forward on this monumental vision in partnership with Hillsborough County Public Schools and inclusive of our youngest generation by also bringing in Head Start. This is a long-term vision, and I applaud your steadfast leadership and hard work as you consider the next steps of the center. I stand ready as your partner, sincerely, U.S. Representative Kathy Castor. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Brett Snowden, is Brett here, followed by Alan Harris, and then Santiago Carrada. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Thank you to the Board of County Commissioners for your time and commitment to community enrichment. And my purpose today is to advocate for the continued construction and funding of the African-American Arts and Cultural Center, the vision of Commissioner Gwen Myers. The center is envisioned as a vibrant, multipurpose space dedicated to celebrating stories, achievements, and culture of the African-American communities and the African diaspora through events, arts, and educational experiences. It will serve as a launching pad for youth and young adults and inspire our future generations. West Tampa is a historic neighborhood with a rich legacy, but also a history marked by racial strife and tension. The center will honor the history and contribution of those who have shaped Tampa's foundation, ensuring the stories are preserved and celebrated. The center will be a hub for community outreach and strategic partnerships fostering collaboration and engagement across Tampa. Its multi-use studios will support arts, dance, music, and more, making it a flexible resource for diverse programming. There's a vital need to invest in spaces that uplift and empower historically marginalized communities. The center will address gaps in cultural representation and provide opportunities for education, creativity, and economic development. I request the Board's support for construction and operational funding, and as we look at the long-term benefits, its economic growth, tourism, youth engagement, and a stronger and more inclusive community. Let's envision together the transformative potential of the African-American Arts and Cultural Center. Thank you for your time.
And sir, can you state your name? Can you state your name for the record?
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. Brett Snowden, pastor of Greater Bethel Missionary Baptist Church.
Thank you, sir. Alan Harris, is Alan here, followed by Santiago Carrada, and then Maria Gilmore.
Good morning.
Good morning, honorable Commissioners, esteemed county leadership and staff, all those watching on television this morning. Santiago Carrada, President and CEO of Visit Tampa Bay, here to speak in favor of Item G2 and all related items regarding the African-American Arts and Cultural Center. As a Board member, working very, very closely with the leadership of the county, I get excited about the project, and people in my industry get excited about a project that has so many benefits. You've already heard about the community benefits and how it's going to serve our local community. But in the tourism industry, when you're adding an asset, that can be a tourism asset, it's truly exciting. We know what the History Center does for us, our art museum, our children's museum, Mosey, the Performing Arts Center, and this will be another jewel in that crown that we can entice visitors to come and learn about our history, the culture, and really Hillsborough County. So again, it doubles as an asset that can be rented for space, and we know that many, many conventions and visitors are looking for off-site places to have unique experiences. So it is really my honor to speak in favor of the item and ask respectfully that you vote favorably on all of those items that are going to truly better our county, our community, and really our tourism assets. So thank you for this opportunity. Thank you for all of your support each and every day, and I hope to see some of you later today at our 40th Anniversary Annual Meeting. I have to get used to 40th Anniversary Annual Meeting. Thank you so much. Hope you have a fantastic meeting.
Thank you, Santiago. Appreciate your comments. Maria Gilmore, followed by Denise Herndon, and then Jarrett Nelson. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marie Gilmore. I'm a 25-year resident of southeast Hillsborough County. I respectfully request the Board's continued support for preserving the $1.65 million previously allocated for the historic Mosley renovation project in Brandon. The Mosley Homestead, listed on the National Register of Historic Places, is a 14.75-acre historic and environmental sanctuary that reflects Florida's agricultural, architectural, and cultural heritage. After her passing in August of 2020, matriarch Julia Winifred Mosley and her family entrusted the property to the Timberly Trust to ensure its preservation and continued service to our community. Many residents were unaware that BP oil spill funds had been allocated and designated for these improvements. In support of this effort, community members are now forming an advisory committee to partner with the trustees to help move the project forward. The Timberly Trust envisions a future in which the site's historic buildings are restored, responsibly maintained, and open to the public as a living testament to our shared heritage. Through careful stewardship of the restoration funds, we will protect the original structures, ensure- ensure their long-term stability, and preserve their stories for generations to come. Thank you for your time, leadership, and continued commitment to preserving Hillsborough County's rich history. I also want to thank the county staff and their team and the BOCC website for making it very easy to navigate, research, and sign up for public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilmore. Denise Herndon, followed by Jarrett Nelson, who's virtual, and then Leila Liliquist. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Denise Herndon. I have a problem with the county starting new projects, especially in arts and cultural center, when in those areas where the minorities are, there's no sidewalks, period. Winstoll had worked with a woman that had tried to get her sidewalk fixed for 16 years. She had a sidewalk. There's places in Brandon and especially some of these minority areas that have no sidewalks, period. In Brandon, down Woodbury, Halls, several of the cross centers from 60 to Oakfield and Brandon have no sidewalks, period. And why are we starting new projects? You're asking for donations, but who's going to fund it from here on? Us taxpayers. So let's get sidewalks first for... There's a lot of minorities right there on Woodbury and Grand Regency, just in Brandon where I live. How many others? It's beautiful on 22nd Street or Avenue north of Fletcher, where the CDC building is. That's in all those areas, and there are minority areas, and here you want to start something that people don't even have sidewalks. People need to be able to walk around. You guys have... This is a small part of what our medical society has done to us. We are causing our illnesses ourself. All the food banks and stuff, that's not nutrition. That's not food. That's junk that people are trying to eat. No More Tears, The Dark Secrets of Johnson &amp; Johnson. Johnson &amp; Johnson started with baby powder, and it just... If it didn't have the asbestos in it, that they found out many, many years ago, the powder alone is bad on your lungs. Women doing your nails in places, concrete, there's a lot of things that are bad on our lungs. As a respiratory therapist, I know when I did breathing treatments, 50, 60 a night, that's bad on my lungs. This brain fog here, it talks about all the drugs, especially Chapter 7, that you guys have approved for, for all of your psychiatric, what you call homeless. Antidepressants cause the main thing for breast cancer and ovarian cancer and other cancers. And doctors are nonchalantly, "Gotta give 'em that, gotta..." Chapter 7 of this book, The Brain Fog Fix, talks about all of these drugs you guys have approved.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Appreciate the comments. Jarrett Nelson, virtual. Is Jarrett on the line?
Jarrett did not check in.
All right, thank you. Leila Liliquist. Is Miss Liliquist here? If not, Robert Evans.
Leila's here.
Oh, come on down. Followed by Robert Evans and then Thomas Cobert. Sir, I think she was ahead of you.
Oh.
Good morning, Board of County Commission. I came to speak on A24, and I know that you guys pulled it today, and I'm here to say that we got notice of that yesterday. And all the people that put on the Fourth of July Parade and all the other parades and activities in unincorporated Hillsborough County should have gotten notice a long time ago. And as the Chair of the Fourth of July Parade for the past two years in Brandon, I think that the policy should be shared with the citizens of Hillsborough County. We are in the sunshine, and because we had no prior notice on that policy, even though you guys pulled it, this is a very important year for America. This is our 250th anniversary. This is an election year coming up. All of our candidates like to meet the citizens of our community. And the way the policy is written now, it will be more hurdles to jump through for the small not-for-profits that put on this wonderful parade. And I, for one, tried to save the county a lot of money last year by rerouting the parade and cutting out about a mile and a half on the parade route so that our citizens could have shade trees. Unfortunately, TECO hasn't made a plan for replanning the trees they cut down and cut back. Our Fourth of July Parade is important to our citizens of Hillsborough County as well as the families that attend every year, and I think you're putting that at jeopardy with this policy the way it is written. I would suggest that we go back and do a collaborative effort with our county commissioners, all in place, with members of the community of Brandon and our unincorporated Hillsborough County, and question the validity of us not knowing what the plan is for incorporated Hillsborough County. And there's a lot of loops in here that don't make sense. But that is a very, very close-to-my-heart thing. I've participated in the parade as a volunteer for the last 20 years, and I, for one, am going to hold strong to my heart that we have to value our green spaces. We have to be planting trees right now. Right now would be a perfect time for you guys to jump on board and plant 100,000 trees like we're supposed to do in Tampa last year. They lost a million-dollar grant to do that. We're heating up. Our green spaces are important. Our community comes out to hear what's going on in our community. They come out to see our politicians. They come out to know that you guys are working for us, and that's the one chance they have to see you as a politician, coming out and supporting your campaign. But if you take our Fourth of July Parade away, it's not going to be a good thing, just like if you take that money away from Mosley. Mosley has been there for a long time, and we should have had a museum in Brandon a long time ago. So I strongly say, don't do that. Don't take that money away. We have kids, schoolkids, that need to know about homestead. They need to know about the history of Florida. And as one that has been a strong citizen and always done the right thing in the interest of my government and this community, last year we saved a lot of money by closing that intersection of Robertson and Kings that you guys probably didn't even realize.
Thank you, Ms. Liliquist.
Thank you.
Please state your name for the record, please.
Leila Liliquist. Thank you.
Robert Evans, followed by Thomas Cobert and then Robert Gelman. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Robert Evans, 7207 Alify Ridge Road. On behalf of the residents of Alify Ridge Community in Riverview, we bring to your attention the upcoming negative impacts, both fiscal and economic, that the future 60-inch diameter underground South Hillsborough County pipeline will impose upon our community. Segment A of the pipeline is currently designed by the engineering firm of Wade Trim and is to be constructed down the middle of Alify Ridge Road, impacting both lanes, which is the only access to our community. Within the presentation booklet provided to each of you last Tuesday, the applicable specifications and requirements were clearly cited with references in the Hillsborough County Utility Accommodation Guide and Right-of-Way Use Procedures Manual. These county requirements are to protect the general public as stated in Section 5.1 and should not be ignored, waived, or exceptions granted. As depicted in the 90% draft construction plans for Tampa Bay Water Project Segment A, the restoration of the stormwater management system and Alify Ridge Road do not meet Hillsborough County standards. Copies of the Wade Trim plans and specifications for Alify Ridge Road were also provided. Furthermore, the design does not meet Section 2.1.5.5 Emergency Vehicles regarding access in the Hillsborough County Transportation Design Manual. The impacts of the Alify Ridge community far exceed the failure to comply with the county design standards. The residents will face tremendous hardship throughout the five-year construction period to complete all phases of the pipeline installation in Alify Ridge Road. As part of the design project, a 20-foot temporary construction easement will be mandated within a homeowner's property along the full length of the eastern side of Alify Ridge Road, which is approximately one mile. These easements will require the removal of all homeowners, driveways, trees, landscaping, irrigation, fences, gates, entry features, from within 20 feet of the homeowner's front property line, followed by regrading, installation of barricades, and temporary pavement. These easements will have a definitive term of five years. All of these homes will be unmarketable for the full duration of these easements. The balance of the homes within the Alify Ridge community will be unmarketable until all construction and restoration activities are complete. Considering the seriousness of this matter, we hope that you have taken a few minutes to review the presentation booklet as well as the attached supporting exhibits. The extent of the negative impacts to the residents for the Alify Ridge community is overwhelmingly apparent and can be minimized with your action here today. Only this Board of County Commissioners has the authority to address this matter, as these significant impacts will occur in the Hillsborough County right of way. We ask that you direct the Public Works Department to require the corrections cited to the Wade Trim plans so as here to the county's own requirements. The authority was clearly cited, which specifically authorized this, the Board of County Commissioners, to require strict adherence to these guidelines. This is attached in Exhibit 15 to the presentation booklet. I also have you copies of the emergency vehicle guidelines for each of you so that you can better understand exactly what we're going to deal with when this happens.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Appreciate it.
Should I hand this to?
Get the clerk over here. We appreciate your comments and information. Thomas Cobert, and then Robert Gelman, and then last speaker is Chris Curry, which is virtual. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. My name is Tom Cobert. Prior to the No King rallies, the Speaker of the House said it was going to be a Hate America rally, consisting of Hamas terrorists, illegal aliens, violent criminals, and Antifa, which is short for anti-fascists. Antifa was founded by the American soldiers that beat the Nazis. It is a political philosophy that has no organized group of people. The No King rallies had 7 million peacefully protesting Americans who stated quite loudly that we stand for democracy and will never accept a king or a dictator. The President is ignoring the rule of law and the Constitution while enriching himself and his family. He has the most corrupt administration in history. He has said he can do anything he wants and has a complicit Republican Congress and corrupt Supreme Court that allow him to do so. He tore down the east wing of the People's House, made the Oval Office look like King Midas went on a drunken rampage, decked out the Lincoln bathroom in marble and gold, paved over the Rose Garden, and is planning to build a Let Them Eat Cake Golden Ballroom, all without going through the approval process the law requires. He is turning the People's House into Mar-a-Lago on stair roads, and he is just getting started. ICE and the Border Control conduct themselves like a Gestapo, which is defined as a government's secret police that ruthlessly suppresses opposition to the government and sends undesirables and others to concentration camps. This is being brutally done to non-white immigrants and American citizens while violating the law and their rights under the Constitution. Things are getting worse. The price of health insurance provided through the ACA is skyrocketing, leaving over 20 million Americans unable to afford it. Many will lose SNAP benefits under the Big Billionaire Bill. 40 million people, mostly children, are hungry now. We have a Secretary of Health and Human Services whose own family calls badass crazy. People are going to get sick and die because of him. Hurricane Melissa is going to be the new normal. FEMA is underfunded with leadership that is incompetent. This will leave people on their own in a disaster. All of this will have a negative impact on the residents of Hillsborough County. The Republicans last night got a wake-up call to start serving the American people, and they're finding out the sleeping giant is waking up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cobert. Appreciate your comments. Robert Gelman, Mr. Gelman here. Okay, last speaker, Chris Curry, virtual. Is Chris on the line?
Chris was on the line, but just disconnected.
Okay, all right. That closes public comment. Can we have a motion to approve the consent?
So moved.
Motion Commissioner Winstoll, second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote on the consent agenda.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Bonnie, you got a few minutes before our first time.
Yes, we have a few minutes so we can move to the regular agenda. And the first item is item B1. This is to approve a change order relating to stormwater and construction-related services in eastern Hillsborough County. Josh Bellotti will take us through this item and then item B2 as well.
Good morning, Josh.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations. This item is the first change order to the county's contract with PCS Civil for ongoing stormwater culvert replacements in eastern Hillsborough County. A significant amount of this contract's initial capacity has gone towards emergency and high-priority stormwater culvert projects, particularly in the wake of Hurricane Milton. This includes, for example, a box culvert bridge replacement on Pippin Road. In order to ensure that these additional projects, as well as the FY26 planned projects, could be completed, additional capacity is needed on this contract, as well as a time extension through October of 2026. As always, purchase orders on this contract will only be issued against approved budgets. There is sufficient funding included for these projects in the culvert replacement program in the adopted CIP. The current contractor has had successful performance to date and thus far has exceeded the DM, DWBE participation goal on the contract. Staff recommends approval.
All right, thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion approved. Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Winstoll, please accord your vote on B1. B2.
Okay, thank you. B2, much like the previous item, this is also a change order for the stormwater culvert contract with PCS Civil. This contract is for western Hillsborough County. Circumstances are the same. The capacity amount and time extension vary slightly based on the projects included and the initial expiration date. PCS has been performing successfully on this contract as well and has also exceeded their participation goal thus far. Staff recommends approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Winstoll, please accord your vote on B2.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you. The next item is item B5, and I was looking for Scott Stromer, and he does not seem to be here just yet. So we could move to Commissioner Cameron Cepeda's item, item F1, if you're ready, Commissioner.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda.
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a motion to approve the allocation of $40,000 of unexpended FY25 nonprofit budget originally intended for mentors for Hillsborough County veterans to three other nonprofit organizations as follows. $15,000 to Veterans Helping Veterans, $15,000 to Ministerio Mujeres Restauradas por Dios, and $10,000 to Lotus Coalition. And FY25 funding agreement for mentors for Hillsborough County veterans was not completed. Thus, the funding expired at the end of FY25 and remained unspent. These new amounts for the three organizations would be considered as a one-time funding to be included in the FY26 budget. Direct the county administrator to draft funding agreements with each organization and a related budget amendment, reducing reserves in the countywide general fund to be placed on future consent agendas.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda. Do I have a second?
Just to clarify, that was item F5.
F5, okay. Second Commissioner Winstoll, Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Cepeda, did you notify the mentors for Hillsborough County veterans that you were removing this money from their funding source?
They told me they were not able to use it.
Excellent. Thank you for that answer.
Okay, don't see anything else in the queue. Please accord your vote on F5.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, Bonnie, we'll go back to that.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, would you like to go back to item F1, which is the Expressway Authority item?
Yes, I believe we have John here to put up a map, just in case.
John Patrick can put up a map, please.
So I would like to direct staff, make a motion and direct staff to ensure the ongoing study and partnership with Tampa Hillsborough Expressway Authority, THIA, to evaluate a potential expressway project along the US 301 corridor includes consideration for an extension of the expressway beyond the current plan limits reaching into the Sun City area. So if you... Just in case anybody wants to see that, we're just extending it, the study to go all the way to Sun City.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, second Commissioner Cohen, Commissioner Miller.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I had a couple of questions around this one. My concern is really around that it says direct staff. The Expressway Authority is a completely separate entity, and we already partner with them and working with them. I need some clarification from staff, what that would mean. In other words, we can't overreach our...
We're working directly with the... We're working directly with THIA, and it's for THIA. They're doing the study, so they're doing the study.
That's exactly correct. They're doing the study, and if their request was for us to support that study, which I 100% do support it, and I spoke with them yesterday, and that's what they're looking for, is for support, but this direct staff to ensure that the ongoing study is an overreach of us into their organization, and that's what I had concerns with.
They will be contacting THIA to let them know.
Sir, would you like to make any comments?
No, so THIA is ready, Commissioner Miller, you're right. The THIA is ready to support and ready to extend that thing to Sun City Center. This is just showing your support to the project. That's what it is.
Then I would think it needs to be rewarded that we are voting to show our support, not directing staff to participate in it. That is actually...
We are, in fact, participating in the project. We are hand-in-hand with them, working on the Riverview Community Plan Update. So, yeah, either ways.
Yes, we've already been working with them for quite a while now, I'm aware, to make this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I don't see anyone else in the queue. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie?
Thank you.
Can I get your name for the record, please?
My name is John Patrick.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can go to Item B5 now. This is select and authorized negotiations with the firm determines who's best qualified for the county's federally funded community development block grant disaster recovery program.
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Competitive seal proposals were solicited for services to implement the county's federally funded community development block grant disaster recovery program. The solicitation specified a three-year initial contract term with a one-year additional three-year, one additional three-year term, and conditions of which will show up in the agreement. Item B5 is asking the board to, one, select the firm whose proposal is the most advantageous to the county, considering price and the other factors defined in the RFP, and, two, to authorize negotiations with the selected firm. After carefully reviewing each proposal, meeting with each firm, and evaluating the qualifications methodologies offered by each, the evaluation committee ranked the firms as follows, from highest to lowest, based on the criteria, factors, and relative weights of importance published in the solicitation. Number one was Ernst &amp; Young at 81.2 points. Second was Horn LLP at 77.6 points. Tetra Tech Incorporated at 74.8 points. Number four was ICF Incorporated LLC at 72.6 points. Guide House Incorporated, number five, with 67.6 points. Indelible Management Solutions, number six, with 60.1 points. And number seven, Elite Business Strategies LLC, with 60 points. It's important to note that the procurement standards under the Uniform Administrative Requirements under the Code of Federal Regulations require solicitations involving federal funds to identify all evaluation factors and their relative importance, two, adhere to all written procedures for conducting technical evaluations and making selections, and, three, to be awarded to the responsible offer whose proposal is most advantageous to the county, considering price and the identified evaluation factors. Failing to meet those federal procurement standards could result in financial penalties, repayment of federal funds, and/or the loss of future or current funding for projects. Please be assured that the procurement process to this point, including the committee's careful and deliberate application of the published evaluation factors and written procedures, fully complies with the procurement standards. To aid in your review of the process, the proposals and the firms themselves, links to all the proposals and recordings of the evaluation committee meetings and vendor presentations were provided to commissioners' offices while in advance of the meeting. The evaluation committee's scoring and ranking is presented to the board for its consideration, and staff respectfully requests that the board select the firm whose proposal is the most advantageous to the county, considering price and the other factors defined in the RFP, and, two, to authorize negotiations with the selected firm.
All right, thanks, Scott. We have any questions or comments? Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you. First of all, I thank you very much for all of your work on this. I know that the committee was very thorough and did exactly what we asked, which was to bring us back essentially rankings, but not to actually make a choice of a vendor. During the process, did you do any kind of a deep dive into the history of these companies in handling these types of contracts and whether or not they had been subject to clawbacks in their various experiences over the years?
That would have been included with the committee. The committee did look at that. They did review some of those.
Is that, so, is that information that was actually taken into account in the scoring, or it was just part of the deliberative process, just sort of factored in?
I think it was probably factored into their qualifications, the assessment of their qualifications of each of those firms.
Yeah, you know, my struggle here with this is that it's just an enormous contract, and it's an enormous amount of money that is going to be made by whoever has awarded this contract. And I find myself very interested in what everyone else has to say about it because I think, you know, this is really our first chance to discuss this in a very long time. One thing I wanted to mention was that I think with the government shutdown, this is very important to get done as quickly as possible because we want to get the process moving. We want to get money into people's hands. But because of the government shutdown, I think that at the minimum, the process is going to be slowed a little bit. And it's not like when the government reopens, they're going to turn on the light and be able to process all these, you know, everything that's built up over the time. And where I'm going with this is I'm not entirely sure if this is a decision that we want to make today. I think we might want to get some more information, particularly as it relates to whether or not we only have to choose one vendor, or whether we can choose more than one vendor, and what that might look like. I was also interested in this clawback issue because, for me, the evidence of a major error on one of these type of contracts might be disqualifying. I really don't know unless I was aware of the circumstances. So I just wanted to throw out to the board, as we get ready to discuss this, that there may be some things that we want the committee to do before we make an absolutely final decision because we must get this right, in my view. We cannot make a mistake, and if it's a week or two in any direction, that doesn't particularly concern me. I don't think that we can bat this around forever, but we do have a unique set of circumstances on our hand. It's very unlikely that two weeks is going to make any difference in it. So that was just where I wanted to start the conversation.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Stromer, for your presentation today, and thank you for answering my endless questions. I think we've met quite a bit in the last few weeks. As you mentioned, Commissioner Cohen, this is a huge decision, and we've been laboring over it, and I was telling my friends, I don't think the community really understands that we don't get to talk about it, and so we're forced to make this huge decision on behalf of the people of Hillsborough County without having a night even to sleep on it. So I completely feel where you're coming from. I went back and looked at the original request when we all met, and there seemed to be consensus pretty much across the board that we needed to consider maybe more than one firm. And I really do think that, in this case, that is going to be the best answer. I know staff was very interested in maybe just dealing with one firm, but for me, the amount of this money, it mitigates the risk over more than one firm. And I think in this case, I shouldn't say, I know in this case that you and your team have spent countless hours. We don't have the time. That's why we have to depend on their processes to do this, to select the firms that they believed, based on all of their research and interviews. Then even to pore over the summaries was hours of work, and that wasn't even the individual interviews. And so my recommendation is that we split the work up between more than one firm, and I think it's probably behooves us to choose the number-one and number-two firm based on the scoring system and the processes that they went to. This does not increase fees. I told you I spent a lot of time with him. This does not increase the fees to the community or the money that we're going to spend for firms because there's a cap on the amount that can be spent. It does not slow the process down because they've already selected them. I think it allows us to draw on the technical expertise. So in other words, today, if we decide, we can have them push forward and say, choose what the two firms, the top two firms are best at, and come back to us with contracts for what that looks like, so that they're responsible for a lane. So we won't have that, well, this firm was responsible for this, and the finger-pointing, per se. We can get that specific in our direction today. So I will agree with you that the stakes are just too high for us to not get this right, but I also think in getting it right, we have to move forward. Our counterparts, who were affected by the exact same storm, have already made their decisions and are processing money to the communities. So I think that that needs to be factored in as well. I'm not going to make a motion at this time until I can hear what everyone else has to say, but those are my thoughts on it for the moment.
All right, Commissioner Winstall.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, to comment on some of the things that were said, you know, unfortunately, I have the ability to recall things vividly, and the Chair did specifically say at the original meeting about the idea of considering potentially multiple vendors because it's a big pot of money. You guys were all very gracious in supporting my global contractor separation, and for that reason, I'll just support whatever you're thinking on this. I admittedly don't know much about EY, but that they are a local business, so I know that'd be local residents that get the benefit of it, so that's a plus for me. And I have heard the name Horn a lot, and I know that they're respected in the industry. So really, whatever you guys want, I'll be amenable to. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do concur that it be split, that we at least have two. But also, Scott, I want to ask you a question. Out of the seven, how many of these proposals doing more projects? Can you tell us?
I, yeah, I don't have that.
You don't have it with you?
Yeah, I have to go back to the committee minutes.
Because I know one or two have contracts in other areas, and I'm not sure if they'd be able to perform the work here in Hillsborough County because they have so many.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, all the firms committed that they can do the work. They weren't concerned with their capacity necessarily, so. And I'll also add, so the solicitation did reserve the county's right to award to multiple vendors by task. So that way, two firms aren't working exactly on the same task, but the task could be split up.
And I'll chime in here, Commissioner is next, but Commissioner Winstall's right. I consistently stated that I believe because of the size of the grant, we should utilize multiple firms. It allows us to take advantage of the technical expertise of both. I've got no skin in the game. Ernst &amp; Young, I know, back from my KPMG days, they were a competitor years ago, well-respected firm, local presence. Don't know as much about Horn, but they did come in number two. So I would be supportive of moving forward with the number-one and number-two firms of promotions on the floor. Commissioner Miller.
I'd like to formally make the motion. Thank you, Chair. To request staff to split up the work between Ernst &amp; Young and Horn, the top two scores as presented by staff, and to, in your best ability, in your best opinion, draw from them their strengths and craft the contracts and bring them back to us in the December board meeting, please.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Miller, Second Commissioner Winstall, Commissioner Cohen.
I just want to say I will support the motion. It sounds like everyone's comfortable moving forward today with the two, and I do think that they're going to have to come back to us with the contract. So we will actually get the information about how they are going to divide this up, and we can make a judgment about it at that time.
No, that's an excellent point, Commissioner Cohen. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Please accord your vote on B5.
I'll edit the vote. Motion carries, seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And just, we will, Commissioner Cohen, so we'll follow up on those questions you had, and when we come back, we'll have those answers for you as well, so. Okay? Very good. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. Bonnie, we've got a first-time cert.
Yes, our first public hearing is Item D1. This is to conduct a public hearing to accept comments on the substantial plan year amendments for annual action plan. Cheryl Howell will take us through this item. This is a public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cheryl Howell, Assistant County Administrator, Community Impact. Today, we're conducting a public hearing to receive comments on the substantial amendment to the planned year 2025 annual action plan and to close a public comment period that began on October 5, 2025. Following the hearing, we're requesting approval to adopt the substantial amendment to the PY25 annual action plan for submittal to HUD. This action will also authorize the Chair or County Administrator to execute the HUD-required grant agreements, along with any related amendments or certifications, once received and approved by the County Attorney's Office. Affordable Housing has properly noticed this public hearing in local newspapers, at public libraries, and also on the county's website. There is no fiscal impact to the adopted PY25 annual action plan or to holding this public hearing.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. We have one individual that signed up, Denise Herndon.
Hello, I'm Denise Herndon. My question here is, these announcements that you're going to put out according to affordable housing, I'm finding out that it depends on 100%, 120%, 30% of the median income. Is there going to be something letting these people know what really is affordable housing? Because you county commissioners have approved 10,000 homes to be built that hasn't even been started, and some of them said, oh, there's going to be affordable housing in there. When one woman came up and said, just herself, she made $100,000 a year, and she can't afford a house, I want to see something that you guys are showing what really is affordable housing. Because all of this stuff that, City of Tampa and you county commissioners, bring the tourists in, bring the tourists in. Well, guess what? The main people, the hospitality workers, are not getting all the money that you're touting that this community is making. They're making minimum wage, and if they're getting tips, oops, that's $10 an hour. They can't afford the prices here. We're going to be like California. We've already got homeless people out on the streets. How many of them are CEOs that I have spoken to because they had their emails hacked into, and you can't get a job because everything's by the internet? These are the, some of the people, and you county commissioners have voted to fund, just push a drug, push a drug, all the homeless people, they need to be put on a drug, that, no, they've just lost hope. If I haven't owned my home for 26 years, it needs a lot of work, but guess what? I don't qualify for anything. And I'm going to build a wellness center because of all of the FDA, for years, back in the '60s, have been working with stuff. This little book is just food additives. This is the cause of our health crisis, and it just is a buildup. There is no child that's overweight that is food insecure. They are nutrition insecure. And you county commissioners need to really, that book, Johnson &amp; Johnson, it came out the beginning of this year. It needs to go to number one, and every one of you county commissioners needs to read it. It needs to go worldwide. It's not just happening in the United States with these drug companies, doctors, joint commission, hospitals. They don't make money. Tylenol is a, they start giving Tylenol at 99.10.
Thank you, Ms. Herndon. Can we have a motion?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote on D1.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
D2.
Thank you. The next public hearing is Item D2. This is to conduct a public hearing regarding the towing, removal, and immobilization. And Whitney Green from the County Attorney's Office will take us through this public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Whitney Green, Assistant County Attorney. This is a public hearing to consider proposed revisions to Hillsborough County Ordinance 17-34 as amended. The amended ordinance eliminates the 15-minute wait time and authorization requirement needed prior to towing, removal, or immobilization. The board authorized scheduling and advertising this public hearing at your last board meeting, and all associated legal advertising requirements have been met. Code Enforcement Director Joe Gross is present to speak to the changes, and we're both available. to speak to the changes, and we're both available to answer any questions that you may have. This is a public hearing.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning. As Whitney said, today's, Joe Gross, Code Enforcement. Today's public hearing addresses concerns that emerged from revisions made in August, expressed by stakeholders such as the Bay Area Apartment Association, Hillsborough County Towing Association, and the Professional Wrecker Operators of Florida. Our department, through our Regulatory Compliance Division, continues to meet and work with the industry as issues arise, such as statutory changes, economic pressures, and other service dynamics. Representatives are, from those stakeholders, are in attendance, and thank you in advance.
Thank you, Joe. Now, we've got three individuals that have signed up to speak. First one, Justin Heller, followed by Eric Garduno, and then Denise Herndon. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners, everybody. My name's Justin Heller. I am actually a born and raised Bay Area native. I am also the current Chairman for Hillsborough County for Professional Wrecker Operators of Florida. And I just wanted to actually thank all of you for your time and dedication in helping us all fix this. I wanted to thank Joe Gross and the Code Enforcement for diligently working with the industry-leading professionals to come to an agreement on what works for everybody, what works for the constituents and residents of Hillsborough County, what works for all of us small businesses, and what works for the multifamily industry. So thank you very much. I do appreciate all of your hard work with this, and look forward to getting to know all of you better.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Eric Garduno?
Good morning. My name is Eric Garduno. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Bay Area Apartment Association. I thank you for this opportunity to speak this morning, and actually, thank you for bringing forward this ordinance. We really appreciate the changes that are listed. Earlier this year, as noted, there were updates to the county's trespass towing ordinance. Many of those updates were very useful, very important. That said, there are a couple provisions that we think were, or at least inadvertently have an impact on our industry as apartment owners and operators, managers, that impact our ability to efficiently and effectively provide safe and reliable parking experiences for our residents. And so this ordinance addresses those couple tweaks, or makes a couple tweaks to address those issues. Again, I just want to say thank you to all the county commissioners here who've worked on this, all the county staff who've worked on this, and we look forward to continuing to work with both the body here and the staff on future issues. So appreciate you all.
Thank you, sir. Last speaker, Denise Herndon.
I'm Denise Herndon. Is this parking violations on the city, county, apartment condominiums? I didn't get a chance to look at all of the issues here, but as a Board Director at Oakbridge Run many years ago, we had to notice them 24 hours, and then we could tow them. And if the person came out, they could even have the person stop the towing, even if they had the car on the tow truck. I don't know what these revisions are, but there's a lot of people violating, where I live, it's a dead-end road, so it's not an issue where I live, but I'm concerned about, is this to give more revenue? Who's getting the revenue out of this? Because we didn't get any revenue. It was the towing company that got the revenue. So is this really something that, who started this? I know Code Enforcement had spoken about this, but I don't know. I'd like to have somebody explain more to me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please, although you weren't on the list.
Good morning, Commissioner Steve Michelini. Sorry, I'm not as familiar with your process over here with signing up and going through your securities checkpoints, so I apologize to you. I'm here on behalf of the Hillsborough County Towing Association, and again, thanks to Joe Gross and his staff, and working with them to modify this current towing ordinance. We're fully in support of this. We've had numerous discussions, and we've worked with the staff, or as you probably know, for over two years in crafting the ordinance that you all adopted fairly recently. So we thank them for that, and we are here in support of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Michelini. Appreciate your comments. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion approved. Commissioner Myers, and Commissioner Wollstall. Don't see anyone else in the queue. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Bonnie?
Thank you. Perfect timing, Commissioners. We can move on to item G2, which is to receive a report on the African-American Arts and Cultural Center. And John Muller will take us through this, and Nicole Travis is here from the nonprofit as well. This item is related to item B3.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Muller, Director for Facilities Management and Real Estate Services. We're here today for an update on the African-American Arts and Cultural Center, or you'll sometimes see it referred to as AAACC. Here today with us is Nicole Travis. She is the Executive Director for the Tampa Bay African-American Arts and Cultural Center, Inc. That nonprofit was formed in 2023 for the purpose of supporting the AAACC by raising private funds. Nicole will be presenting today as well. Various staff are here with me for questions, as well as Chris Farkas, Deputy Superintendent with the School Board, is also here today. As I begin, we note that the AAC is currently an approved CIP project, similar to other large CIP projects. When a project is at 90% design or more, as we are right now with this project, staff will bring more definitive estimates and information to the BOCC. At this time, no procurement for construction bids has been issued. That will happen when there are sufficient funds available to pay for the estimated construction costs. All construction bid proposals will, of course, be brought to the Board for the final approval. So in 2021, the BOCC approved the preferred location to be 2103 North Rome Avenue, and established the project. Currently at this site, we have our West Tampa Community Resource Center, McLeod Head Start, and Sunshine Line Parking in original buildings which date back as far as 1969. Considerations for this location were West Tampa being one of the eight original African-American neighborhoods in the Tampa, in the city of Tampa, the change in growth that is happening within the West Tampa River redevelopment, and also its location within walking distance of five schools. I'll note that our property conditions require the larger western half of the site must be used uninterrupted for no longer than a year, and our smaller eastern half, which has had Sunshine Line on it for 25 years, must support a program such as Sunshine for low-income or disadvantaged. Therefore, Sunshine will continue parking and operating on this parcel. On this slide, you can also see a list of the nearby investments that are occurring. Please note the $70 million investment that will be completed in the fall of 2027 for the schools. When this was announced in 2024, this was the rebuild of the Just Stewart K-8. When this was announced, we had conversations with the school superintendent and staff about the possibility of moving our Head Start program into new, modern leased space. In addition to children of early Head Start and K-8 being on one campus, if we can provide first-rate facilities through a lease arrangement, that could be applied for federal funding versus outlaying capital. So the project, as designed, as I mentioned, is just nearing completion, very close. Approximately $1 million in grant funds and $1 million in county funds were used for the design. The estimated budget of what is shown on this slide is $44.5 million. This includes a two-story facility, approximately 50,000 square feet, could be slightly higher if you include some of the porches, and the exterior amenities shown, such as an amphitheater, water features, heritage, walking trail, fountain features, et cetera. And of course, the time for groundbreaking, time to build from groundbreaking is estimated at 18 months. So where do we stand in terms of funding? So public funding is listed at the top there, 16 and 1/4 million. A little more than half of that is the county, and the rest is state grants and a $1 million federal grant. After this staff report, we have a companion item, which is B3, for your consideration, which is a naming rights agreement with the Tampa Bay nonprofit, the Tampa Bay African Arts and Cultural Center, Inc. So they can formalize their outstanding pledges and continue private fundraising. At this point, I would like to turn this over to Nicole Travis for a few brief minutes. Nicole?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, and County Administrator, my name is Nicole Travis, and I serve as the Project Lead and the Executive Director of the Tampa Bay African-American Arts and Cultural Center. Thank you for the opportunity to share an update on this transformative project. This vision belongs to all of Hillsborough County. It is a place that honors legacy, celebrates creativity, and drives new opportunity for every resident. I want to be very clear that this project is not designed for one demographic or one community. The center is positioned along the Riverwalk, an area that was not, that has not yet fully benefited from the investments that have transformed other parts of downtown and the Riverwalk Corridor. It will serve as a cultural experience and an economic engine for an area that's gaining a new identity, attracting new residents, and giving rise to small businesses, local restaurants, and neighborhood gathering spaces. To be equally clear, the naming rights agreement is not for the naming of the county facility at all. It simply authorizes our nonprofit to partner with the private sector to secure sponsorship and philanthropic gifts that will complete construction and sustain programming. Right now, we have $7.8 million in pledges ready to move into our Tampa Bay Community Foundation Reserve Fund, including transformative gifts from Coke Florida, the Coke Family Foundation, and anonymous donors who have each committed seven-figure contributions, because they believe in the long-term potential of this project and what it means for West Tampa. Your support will unlock those funds and multiply their impact, allowing us to attract even more private investment and deliver a center that belongs to every part of this county. Our Board represents strength, talent, and partnership, a spirit that makes this county special. Our newly-elected Chair, Demetra Simmons, brings years of leadership as a former banking executive and now CEO of the Tampa Bay Partnership. Serving as Vice Chair is Ed Noreen, former State Representative and former Chair, immediate past Chair of the Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce, an advocate for business growth and civic inclusion. We're also proud to have Commissioner Gwen Myers as a part of this Board. Her voice for cultural equity and community investment continues to move this project forward. You've heard from Board Member Santiago Carrada earlier today. And Santiago's contribution on the Board has been vital, from a destination and marketing perspective, in helping us think about the center not only as a cultural institution, but also as a regional attraction. And we also have another Board Member here in the audience with us today. These leaders, along with our full Board of Directors, believe in collaboration. They see the center as a platform for partnership with our nonprofit schools and cultural institutions throughout the county. This naming rights agreement is a missing piece to the puzzle that allows us to activate those partnerships and even more private sector support. West Tampa is woven into the history of Hillsborough County. Its shops, churches, arts have long been a reflection of the region's soul. Now, new restaurants, local entrepreneurs, and mixed-use housing are bringing fresh energy to this area. The center will strengthen the growth, serving as both anchor and a catalyst. We anticipate approximately 250 construction jobs, 50 to 75 permanent jobs, and an estimated $10 to $15 million in annual economic impact through tourism, events, and small business spending. And the benefits extend across districts. Visitors drawn to the Riverwalk will continue into West Tampa businesses. Families from East Hillsborough will bring students for arts and STEM programming. Cultural tourists might stay in South County or in Plant City, and they will find new reasons to explore Tampa's historic core. Every Commissioner here has championed economic inclusion, workforce opportunity, and neighborhood revitalization. The center advances all of those goals, a cultural engine that supports every district and every resident. To give you a glimpse of what's ahead, we'd like to share a very short video highlighting the spaces within the center. Our Performance Hall, galleries, classrooms, and public areas are designed to bring people together. You can play the video. ... countywide. Please allow us the opportunity to make this difference, to deliver an institution that reflects your leadership and the county's shared values. And we hope you'll join us for the inaugural fundraiser on Saturday, June 27, 2026, at the Florida Aquarium. It will be a celebration of culture, community, and commitment, and we would be honored to have you there. Thank you for your vision, for your continued support of the arts, and for believing in the power of projects that bring people together. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. So last slide here, next steps for the Board's consideration. Please note, and I'll state for the record, there was a reference to related item F4, which, as you all know, was deleted from today, so that is taken off this slide. That will not be put under the additional sources of potential funding for this brief. The Commissioner, excuse me, as I previously mentioned, right directly after this report, I'll be reviewing item B3, the naming rights agreement. We asked that you, as part of this, we asked that you consider to please authorize us to work on the interlocal agreement with the school district staff that we can bring back for the Head Start location at the Just Stewart rebuild. Mr. Farkas is here and available for any comments on that item. Chris?
Good morning, sir. Good morning, dear Commissioners, staff. I appreciate the opportunity, through the educational lens is why I'm here, and talk about that partnership. For many of you that had to drop kids off at school and what that looks like, having a Head Start classroom there where you can drop your four-year-old with your first grader and second grader is a unique opportunity. I think Dr. Jenkins and the staff that works at the county commissions worked with us closely to talk about how we can utilize space and create that educational opportunity for our kids that are younger. So we welcome that opportunity to work with the staff and see if that works for both sides of it, but I think it's a unique opportunity for us to help our community.
If you just state your name.
Sorry. Chris Farkas, Deputy Superintendent, Hillsborough County Schools.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're here for any questions.
Okay. Going to Board Discussion. Commissioner Wollstall?
I had only queued because no one else was, but Commissioner Myers, it's your item if you want to go first. You just weren't queued when I.
No, I hear from you first.
Okay. Mr. Muller, well, first of all, the first thing I want to point out in that presentation that we just heard hit three trigger words that are really concerning me about the project, which was the usage of the words diversity, equity, and inclusion. All three of those were just used in that presentation. We have multiple Board policies at Hillsborough County Government, especially in relation to the fact that we have over a decade of backlogs of critical infrastructure, basic sidewalk maintenance, road maintenance, and repaving requirements in Hillsborough County. Multiple of these Board policies under Chapter III of
But you intentionally, Mr. Horwiddell, used the word "expectations," which we have attempted in the past in very similar situations and CIP projects, and those expectations have consistently not been met, that have ultimately fallen back onto the backs of the homeowners in the unincorporated and three municipalities that were not intended by those projects, including the operations of the New Tampa Performing Arts Center. Is that not incorrect?
I think every facility that the county has has operating expenses, and we...
Unexpectedly, because the New Tampa one was originally proposed that there would be no long-term burden and that the nonprofit would fundraise. And then, those fundraising dollars are not guaranteed. So, ultimately, right now, we have, and I don't think anybody's prepared to dispute this, over a decade minimum of backlogs of maintenance on basic things. We can pull that up. It's undeniable. So, I want to understand, because it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse here. And I understand that we used to do this in the past, which is, in my opinion, exactly why we're now 28 fire stations or so behind, 16 years behind on sidewalk maintenance when I got here. And of course, the biggest lingering one is at least two decades behind on properly maintaining our roads, the expected paving indexes. This cart-before-the-horse situation of, well, we're going to build the kitty, well, what happens if we approve these naming rights next? And we send out these expectations. The nonprofit themselves, which I would like to point out, one of the speakers correctly pointed out who's advocating for this. Many of the people that came and spoke for this, that are on this board, their salaries that net over half a million dollars a year personally are almost completely subsidized by the taxpayers. And those individuals, when they promote organizations like this, it might grow the tax base a bit more to where they themselves personally benefit even more on already over a half a million dollar a year salary. One of the people on their IRS 990 makes almost three-quarters of a million dollars a year. Those are really important points that are left out of all of these staff reports, and no one's really going to give me a clear answer today about why we didn't advocate clearly that if we do this, it will create another unexpected burden on the bottom line of our property taxes that we already can't manage our current assets and infrastructure on. So, these people themselves that they're opining will benefit from this project are ultimately going to pay for the upside-down numbers that we're going to receive when they say, okay, well, maybe we need the county staff to operate it for a year. I think your expectations are $2 million a year about what we're going to have to pay of property taxes to maintain this?
Approximately, yes.
And since we're going to own the building, that will also mean that we're going to have agreements to continue maintaining it since our asset, right? Especially in the event, which is likely, that they don't meet their revenue goals. Is that also correct? If they don't meet their goals, we also have to use property taxes to then go maintain this building?
So, we haven't structured an agreement with them on that point, but we would expect that they provide the funding for the ongoing maintenance of the building. That's why we enter into agreements with those types of organizations. And if I could, there's a lot to unpack there. I would like to talk about the New Tampa Performing Arts Center because staff did recommend that an external group run and manage that facility. However, the Board at the time did not feel it was appropriate for an outside entity to run that facility. Today, the operating expenses are approximately $1 million. They have a 36% recovery rate for that facility. We expect that to continue to increase the longer programming occurs. Will it ever get to zero? I can't answer that for you right now. I suspect not. I don't know of any local government facility that is completely unfettered by some level of support.
All of these things that would require us to increase the property taxes on the residents to continue to maintain our community standards metrics, right, which are highlighted in almost one of these financial policies, that all of these have to be based around us continuing to maintain those community metrics, those community standards, which I discussed with you, and I have a future item to find out about, have not been addressed in at least a decade, even though that's allegedly what the county administrator bases her budget allocations off of. So, that's a bigger conversation. But the reality is, is that we would have to penalize these requirements in our fiscal policies, one which requires a supermajority vote to override that was put into place in 2016 specifically for anything that doesn't establish service priorities and levels of service standards, community service standards, to guide the budget development process and resource allocations. This would seem to directly go against Board Policy 3.05.11.00 in that regard, not to mention a few others that require us to make sure that we're not unexpectedly impacting the bottom line. I'm very confused why it wasn't. We can't just continue to put forward these really lavish and expensive projects and receive these beautiful reports about how amazing it's going to be when we have numerous examples that that is not the reality. You said 36% recovery rate from that facility. How many years have they been in operation?
Approximately four.
Okay. I mean, look, I mean, we're barely a third, an annual recovery rate on that facility. That's annual reoccurring expenses on us and our families. Home affordability is at its lowest probably in my lifetime. I just, I don't understand how this project has even, the numbers have been all over the place. Some say one number, another's like, well, it's actually this number, which is now we're settling in about $44.5 million by the time it actually gets there. It's going to be probably at $50 million. We have millions of dollars of general funds and CIT taxes that have been sitting here in this CIP depreciating for years while it could be going to projects that are imminent right now negatively impacting our families. I don't see how this project has made it this far without us making it very clear that it will have substantial negative impacts on the bottom line of our revenue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Before I call Commissioner Cohen, I just want to state that for the purpose of this, we're essentially going to, for this item, we're going to accept the report, correct?
Yes, sir.
Was there anything, okay, then the next item, the naming rights, I just want to make sure we...
Yes, sir. The naming rights, as well as the authorization to work with the school district, there are a variety of...
That's on the subsequent...
For us to do that, yes.
It's on this item or the next item?
The next item.
Next item, okay. Just wanted to...
If I may, when accepting this report, we'd ask also to be able to authorize on the Head Start interlocal...
To work with the school district on the Head Start.
Yes, that we think...
Okay, got it. Okay, just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. Commissioner Cohen?
A couple of comments. While that was a very compelling speech, I think that there's another responsibility that we have as commissioners, and that is to build a community that is welcoming and is nurturing and offers amenities that make people want to live here and bring their families here and bring their businesses here. And some things are intangible. I think that leaders of the past that made the decision to bring sports teams here, to build a performing arts center, to build an art museum, they knew that the return was not going to be there right away, that it was going to take some time to build it, but that it's all part of investing in the community for the future. And I see this as being something that is visionary and that is aspirational, and everything does not come down to a strict dollars and cents calculation. This board is investing millions and millions of dollars in infrastructure, much of it at your urging. And you, Commissioner Wostel, you have been a relentless advocate for some of the most important infrastructure improvements that we need, and the Board, I think, has been extremely aggressive in trying to squeeze out every dollar we can to improve sidewalks and roads and drainage. And, you know, we had earlier contracts that were increased in order to do work on culverts. We are building fire stations. We are committed to building more. We're going to have a great report, I know later, from our Hillsborough County Fire Rescue about innovative things that they're doing. But just because we have all these responsibilities doesn't absolve us of the responsibility to build the fabric and the heart of the community. And I think that's what this project does. The second thing I would say is that it is matching money that has already been appropriated by the state and the federal government, particularly by the state. $6.5 million from the state is no small feat in the building of this. The final thing I would say is related to the Head Start item. My understanding is that if we put the Head Start program somewhere other than county-owned space, we will get reimbursed by the federal government for that, and so it actually makes more sense for us to co-locate it elsewhere than it does to do it the way that we're doing it now in our own facility. And that may actually be a discussion for another day as relates to some savings elsewhere. But I just want to close by saying that this is a project that 25 years from now, we are going to look back on and be proud that we had the foresight to take this leap and build something that's going to become a very important anchor in this community. And if we don't make these kinds of investments, we're not going to be a place that people want to bring their families, want to move their businesses, want to come and visit. So, I just want to say that I think this is a project of the heart, and sometimes those are the most important projects we can do, particularly in difficult times.
Commissioner Miller?
Thank you, Chair. Because this was an added, the second request about the partnership with the schools, I didn't get that in my understanding, can you just clarify, what is that partnership going to look like? So, when they're asking for the partnership, like, where's that going to be currently? Why are we entering into a contract when there's not a building? So, walk me through that.
So, it would be an interlocal, which, just, Commissioner, to simplify it, we want to lease space for the Head Start. We know that in the past few years, we know how the constraints are on the capital programming that you have in the list. And while the county had taken a position to build Head Starts, we can get reimbursed when we lease space. And so, this is just another opportunity for us to get a modern facility by entering into a lease. In this case, we'll call it interlocal because it's with the school board.
Great. Just in the future, I like to know exactly what I'm voting on ahead of time, if you can just make sure that's included, if you wanted a second item added on there. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all those who have spoke in favor of this project. The African American Art and Culture Center is near and dear to me. It's one I had a vision when I asked county staff to take me out in 2021 to find space that we can consider building in African American Art and Culture Center. And that facility was over in West Tampa at 2103 North Rome Avenue. And I appreciate John and Greg, who have been working with me from day one on this project. We know today, when we talk about DEI, it really reflects the African American community. So, we never want anything to come into the community. Well, as a former county employee, I can remember when the county built the UACDC, funded the whole project with little state dollars coming in. It still stands today. It's a very diverse building where whites, Jewish, blacks come and utilize that facility. Then it was the Tampa Performing Arts, that, yes, they wanted a nonprofit to run that facility, but it ended up being our county parks and recs to run that facility. The taxpayers have been paying their fair share for all of our buildings, and they have enjoyed all of our buildings. If you've been to one of our buildings and you've hosted events there, you know what I'm talking about. This is the reason why we have these facilities. Coming to, soon to come, because I'm going to raise the funding. When we talk about our CIT, the CIT tax was passed, and all of us were sitting around this board. I championed that tax to get it passed, but the one that passed the most was the salary increase for the school board, for their employees. We barely got CIT passed, and we sit here and we talk about all of our sidewalks and the roads that need to be repaired. Well, we have to champion and make that happen and not just tell the taxpayers, oh, well, you're getting another tax. But in 2027, you will have the opportunity to see your tax dollars work on the various projects in Hillsborough County because you have already approved that for us. This project here, the African American Art and Culture Center, is going to be on the west side of the river. The mayor, if I'm not mistaken, I think is investing $56 million into that project. We have five schools that are located in a partnership with Superintendent Ayers, already saying that the students can come to the facility. Visitors, people that live here, we have the Jewish Center. Right there used to be the Foreheads of the Armory. It's open to everyone. DEI is open to everyone. So, we sit here and try to find little ways to kill something when we should rally to determine what's best and how our county is going to grow even better when we have so many visitors come here to Hillsborough County. That's what this facility would bring. So, I'm going to move to receive the report and to authorize, to direct staff to work with the school district to make sure that the McLeod Head Start can be located over on the New Just and Stewart for 2027, because this is a win-win for our county. And I have a colleague that is not going to be supportive, and that's okay. But when the community speaks and taxpayers don't mind paying for what they want and what they enjoy, they enjoy going to the Strass Center, the History Center, the Tampa Bay Museum. All of those things, yes, we helped pay for in the county health funds. Why can't we add another one? Because the African American community, we don't have a place that we can go to, that we can tell our story. We need a place. I'm going to continue to champion, to raise money for the cultural center. And I think Chris Farkas and Superintendent Ayers, when I brought up to you all about how can we find a place for our Head Start, which is right across the street, right across the street, when we demolish the building, the kids that are going right now to McLeod can walk across the street to the New Just campus, and our Head Start can be there. So, when we look at the total picture of how this is going to be very impactful to our county... So we sit here and try to find little ways to kill something when we should rally to determine what's best and how our county is going to grow even better when we have so many visitors come here to Hillsborough County. That's what this facility would bring. So I'm going to move to receive the report and to authorize, to direct staff to work with the school district to make sure that the McLeod Head Start can be located over on the New Just and Stewart for 2027, because this is a win-win for our county. And I have a colleague that is not going to be supportive, and that's okay. But when the community speaks and taxpayers don't mind paying for what they want and what they enjoy, then they enjoy going to the Strass Center, the History Center, the Tampa Bay Museum. All of those things, yes, we helped pay for in the county health funds. Why can't we add another one? Because the African American community, we don't have a place that we can go to, that we can tell our story. We need a place. I'm going to continue to champion, to raise money for the Cultural Center. And I think Chris Fockes and Superintendent Ayers, when I brought up to you all about how can we find a place for our Head Start, which is right across the street, right across the street, when we demolish the building, the kids that are going right now to McLeod can walk across the street to the New Just campus, and our Head Start can be there. So when we look at the total picture of how this is going to be very impactful to our county, our commissioners, this is a yes vote for us. And the one that want to vote no, we're going to move forward because it's going to get done. And that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers. Do you have a second? Sorry, okay, all right. Do you have a second? Tag it Commissioner Cohen, okay. Commissioner Wollstall, you want to go ahead and comment?
Thanks. Like most things, you say, Commissioner Myers, very hyperbolic. You didn't address once the financial shortfalls that were made very clear in the presentation. And second, you led me to be more confused because your executive director said that this was absolutely not for one specific race. She made that very clear. But you just said that it was specifically for the African American community. Third, the Tampa History Museum has its own designated section, which is beautiful to the African American community, which we pay for, and I'm happy to vote yes on that item every time it comes through, and I encourage everyone to go visit it. The city of Tampa just came in and opened its own African American cultural museum. All of those things directly support the African American community. So everything you're saying that we don't support the African American community is flawed in every aspect of your argument. And I'm still very concerned that no one is coming up with a clear response about the significant financial shortfalls and future impacts on the bottom line of our taxpayers. Thank you very much.
Okay. Commissioner Myers, I want to thank you for your vision, your vigilance, and for your fundraising for this project. I admire your leadership, and I look forward to the groundbreaking and ultimate grand opening. I do agree with, and obviously I'm going to support this project, I do agree with Commissioner Wollstall that we can't ignore the operating impact of a project like this. It's unfortunate, but with every project, the intended expectations are never met. But part of that is, as was pointed out, is the operating model that's utilized. Staff, myself, we wanted to go in a different direction for the operating of the New Tampa Performing Arts Center. The board at the time didn't want to do that. So I would just ask that staff consider any and all potential models that will allow us to have a better ROI than even the New Tampa Performing Arts Center. And I know that staff there and Keith is doing a very, very good job, and it's constantly booked, and they have shows and events, I mean, practically daily. So if we can just, we can't ignore it, it's real, but I think we can do a better job of ensuring that ultimate model will, at the end of the day, not be an enormous drain on the taxpayer at the same time. So, but with that, again, Commissioner Myers, very much appreciate all of your work on this. Thanks to your candidly being a bulldog on the fundraising side allows us to leverage the private sector dollars that have been committed. And with the next item, additional private sector dollars that'll be able to be raised. So got a motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Next item?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Hey, next item?
Thank you for that item. No slide on this one. Good morning, Commissioners. John Mueller, Agenda Item B3, for your consideration, is to enter into a naming rights agreement with the Tampa Bay African American Arts and Cultural Center, Inc. Some key points of the agreement include that the county will grant them the ability to enter into donor agreements for the project, such as gallery and exhibit spaces, meeting rooms, classrooms, event halls, et cetera. However, I'll note that the naming rights for the main building are reserved solely for the Board of County Commissioners. Prior to the county's decision to name the building, we will ask them to provide nominations for the main building for your consideration, but the BOCC per policy reserves that right. The parties will agree that they'll use all best efforts towards a target goal of raising a minimum 10-year cycle of $16 million or greater annual using naming rights, galas, sponsorship, and fundraising. Lastly, I'll note that the agreement requires that no naming rights be in perpetuity, that a morals clause be included to allow for termination, and that naming rights shall be consistent with the county's and the nonprofit's missions and values. Funds collected by the TBA-CC on behalf of the county for the construction costs of the project are to be deposited into a reserve fund account with the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay and designated for the exclusive use by the county. They will, the nonprofit will be required to name the county as the beneficiary for the reserve fund account, and any funds that they raise for operational expenses are to be held separate and distinct in another account so that there is a clear separation and no commingling of funds raised through naming rights. And lastly, the county administrator or their designee shall review each and every naming rights agreement, and the county reserves the right to have a final authority to allow or not allow a naming right.
All right. Thank you, John. Commissioner Myers?
Hearing all that John has read and said, I move for approval.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Wollstall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Does approval of this item in any way infer that if this item falls through that we're in an obligation to continue funding this already mismanaged financial disaster?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again, please, sir?
If approval of this item goes through, does it in any way infer a continued obligation from the county to continue to fund the creation of this already mismanaged financial disaster?
I would say it doesn't obligate us to continue. It merely collects the funds to put them into a, and we insisted on a third-party account that we're beneficiaries of, to hold solely for the purpose of reimbursing, and I quoting the language, but it's like the direct construction cost. So there would actually have to be construction happening for us to draw on the funds.
At any point, did your department go through the strategy of maybe just offering this plot of land to this nonprofit so they can take ownership of it and do with it what they want?
Not, no.
Which would further their goal of having a maintained location they can fundraise as well as they possibly can? And at some point, like we do with all other nonprofits, we come in and help them with capital assistance in the event that they meet their own financial goals and don't shift the burden onto the county?
Right. And to, I would say, to your point, as Commissioner Hagan pointed out, for us to look at other operating models, yes, the county does have, I wouldn't say fee simple, but very long-term leases with nonprofits that operate other county-owned parcels.
And maybe this isn't your department because you're real estate, but don't you think that after everything we've just talked about, that the appropriate strategy would be for us to identify all of the sound management policies that we require in our own board policies? One that I'm still not convinced, I don't understand administrator-wise how we're putting forward a project that we've just stated very clearly multiple times is absolutely going to affect our ability to maintain our community service standards, of which we have multiple fiscal policies, one, of course, again, that requires a supermajority vote to deviate from. I don't understand how we're not securing those ideas first and strategies. I don't, I would like the county attorney at some point, I guess, as we go into this, to opine as to whether or not making decisions that are going to absolutely, as we've just heard multiple times on the record, impact our ability to maintain those community service standards, which that policy that I referenced earlier specifically states we're required to do, as long as, as well as some other ones that require sound management fiscal policies. It doesn't sound like a very sound fiscal policy for us to even lure the private industry to continue making donations when we don't even really know if we're going to be able to afford to operate it. We're just guessing, we're working on anticipations and expectations. We're not operating in reality of our current fiscal position, and I don't know how everyone's not as equally concerned about this as I am. And so for those reasons, because no one's really offering a solution, they're just offering emotional responses, we can't conduct business that's going to negatively impact the livelihoods of our taxpayers based off of emotional policies. That's why we have hardened fiscal policies in place. So, and no one's offering any answers to all of the deep concerns for, so there's no way I can possibly support this item moving forward. We should offer up the location to them. We definitely need to ask the citizens of West Tampa if they even want this here, because I've spoke to many who had no idea, have no interest in it being there, and say that it doesn't represent their community, which is, of course, a deep Cuban community at this point. I know myself, because my business was located in West Tampa, where I had to hire only Spanish-speaking employees because many of them aren't even comfortable speaking English. I'm very, very familiar with the demographics of West Tampa, and I believe that this is one of those things where we're rushing in, we're trying to jam a square into a hole. It wreaks a failure and continued burden on our taxpayers, which we will almost certainly have to bring back property taxing increases to pay for. Thank you.
One quick comment before I call on Commissioner Bowles. Kind of piggybacking a little bit on what Commissioner Wollstall just said, and I should have mentioned this during the last item. I know the cost has changed. I imagine that's due to value engineering. But similar to the operating side, I just want to make sure that we're considering if a P3 option would be beneficial or any other model that could reduce the overall construction cost. And I'm sure you are, I just, anything we can do to potentially reduce not only the capital cost, but also the operating cost. So just wanted to put that out there, and I should have said that during the last discussion.
As Mr. Mueller indicated in his slide, we are evaluating any other potential options for us to be as fiscally prudent as possible, as we would on any project.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Bowles?
Thank you. I have a few questions and some comments. The, the cost is at projected cost today, dollars today, is that $44.5 million? That's correct, sir?
Correct.
So, just using that number, we have 16.2 in public funds and 7.8 according to Ms. Travis in private funds. Is that correct? So that's $24 million.
Those are the numbers that were given? Yes, sir.
So, and somewhere in my briefings or in just talking with people in the community, I think roughly the building is estimated to be around $30 million. Is that roughly correct? You know, I'm not going to put you on the...
Yeah, $30 million is basically the building construction and some of the site work. You have other costs on top of that, such as design, which I mentioned was $2 million.
Yeah, yeah. Brick and mortar, about $30 million, roughly. So we're about six, we, you know, we're about $6 million shy from actually being able to bring something out of the ground, if it was just the building. Roughly, okay. So, you know, so I'm looking at some of these numbers. So right now, we got 54% of the building funded, and through private funds, that's 17.5% that we have really, that have been raised with 17, that leaves what, 27% or 37% left, all public funds. And that's been, those private funds have been raised over five years, roughly, we're talking, because this started, I'm assuming, maybe '21, actually, so four years. So we have 7.8 million in four years. And we're still $6 million shy for even getting a brick on the ground.
Yeah, I'll say the private funds really started about two years ago, but nonprofit didn't exist until 2023.
Okay, because that was how they're using that as the commitment for that. And then we're looking at another $16 million in naming rights. So even with the $16 million in naming rights and then with the $24 million, we're still $14 million, or, no, I guess about $4 million shy of what we would need. So that's kind of where the difference is. All right. Some of the things, you know, I think there's some value in heritage, much like we had earlier, we had some issues, and one of the items that was pulled from the docket, our agenda was B3, it was B3 with the, or B4, whatever it was, with the homestead, Mosley Homestead. And, you know, there's a lot of heritage that's involved with that particular property. And much like we can, you know, really get behind the heritage of what's, may come from this as well. And I don't think one should necessarily outweigh the other, you know? And I think that there was enough feedback from the community that we saw that that was recognized and that one shouldn't necessarily take precedent over another. But I do have some thoughts on that if we're waiting to grab this $44 million, or we're waiting for that to come in, and we're still shy that, why haven't we considered a phased-in plan? I would, personally, I would rather see a building built and then kind of continue using that to be part of what continues to raise everything else, rather than scrap the whole thing and not come up with anything and allow that to be not just going out there telling people what could be, but what is. And actually, what I'd like to have considered is that, bring, actually, motion for consideration for you all to develop maybe a phased-in implementation plan to be consistent with the current available funding that we have in recognizing what is there, what we can start, and then maybe with the projected capital requirements for future consideration. Actually, I'd like to make a motion to that extent, if I could.
Do it after we've read on this motion.
Yeah. But, so, and then the second thing that I also can, wanted to kind of, yes, I will after this, I'm not amending, but, yeah, that we also kind of consider and put some timelines on this. I mean, how long can we, I won't say drag it out, but I think if we put some relevant timelines on this, that we can kind of put people's feet to the fire and say, hey, now you have a goal to meet. We always have these goals, right? And then if we can have a goal to meet for this as well, for fundraising, it might put a fire under someone, if we can do these phasing plans as well. So I'll just leave it at that at the moment.
Okay. So, yes, just want to make a couple notes. The, this project in particular, at least from my experience with the county and other jurisdictions throughout my career, probably has the most private sector funding associated with it that I've seen. I think what I'm hearing you say is that you would like to have there be a reason or a cause for the private sector to jump in more urgently and make sure that this gets done as quickly as possible, which quite frankly has been something Commissioner Myers has really asked us to do, try and see what we can do to make this move forward as quickly as possible to have it come out of the ground. So as far as a phasing plan, we definitely, we would, if that's what the board wishes for us to do, we can provide that. It would probably mean that the primary building, and as John said, the related expense for the site prep for that, we would, more than likely, again, this is all done on the fly without consulting with my expert real estate guys, but we would probably say that should be one of the first items to go forward. And then, as I know, the commissioner has a desire to make this a campus. We also understand those costs would then follow on in successive phases, if I'm paraphrasing what you're saying. Is that what you're asking for?
Yeah, I just think there's some, if we're going to look at the possibility of, certainly, I have problems with the operational costs. You know, some of the things that I've considered for the county to look at and for us to look at as a board, coming in with total private operational costs, you know... operational costs, you know, where there's contracts out there outside of county facility or staff, and then also even the private funding with that, the capital. And the unintended consequences, much like Commissioner Wilson was saying, is, is, we gotta, we do have to consider, because this will go on into perpetuity, you know, and what happens if it rolls back, and we can't continue to take care of those, you know, those needs and those requirements, you know, are the reverts going to be in effect, you know, what happens to that facility? You know, I look at the Brandon Regent and kind of what that, and to me, there's, in my opinion, some issues there, but it's a separate line, you know, discussion for a different day. But the same kind of issues could come here, right? And if we don't have those issues where, either we're taking care of it, or someone else is taking care of it, we're investing sixteen million dollars of taxpayer dollars, or whether state, federal, and local dollars into that, you know, I think we definitely have to make sure that we're doing it the best way possible. And if we're able to phase in this project into where the campus is like phase one, two, and three, whatever, or five, whatever it ends up being, that, that could be used as the part of fundraising, so that we don't have to continue to dump dollars in there from out of the norm dollars, that we can actually use private funds to start fundraising for that as well, or the director can do that. So, just thinking, trying to think outside the box that we're not necessarily throwing the baby out with the bathwater, but that maybe we can, you know, look to start building on what we can do in a measured way, that also puts people's feet to the fire and go, listen, we got a couple of years to do this, let's get it done. Because, you know, at what point, this started in 2018 with Commissioner Miller at the time, and with his, I think his project, that, you know, kind of a, to look into what we could do, and we're here fi, you know, eight years later, we're getting close, but we're having all the discussion, and I think that, you know, putting it on a finite timeline may bring that to some finality. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
Excellent conversation. Thank you, Chair. So, many may or may not know that I ran nonprofits for a very long time, and naming rights is an excellent way to be able to raise money, so kudos to being thoughtful in that area. I, I suggest that you name me rights, everything. I don't, you know, the bathrooms, the chairs, like, put your names on everything. If, if anybody can raise this money, I believe that you can, and, and I do believe I'm probably going to support this today, after I get some other questions answered, because I think what it's going to do is, it allows the community to say that they're going to put their money behind the facility. And, and I do think money breeds more money, right? So the more you can roll this along, I do believe you'll probably get more attention from the state, and perhaps the federal, in the next year or two. I strongly agree with Chris Bowles, Commissioner Bowles, that if we put a timeline on it, there is urgency behind it. In other words, tell people they have to get in, and they have to commit to their dollars within a certain window, because the urgency creates it, it gets put on their next budget, they know it's coming, they can commit to you over a certain amount of years. But I also want to talk about what our options are around scale. So, in my life, I don't like to live in debt, I don't think we should be putting the debt onto the taxpayers of Hillsborough County. When that timeframe has come to its end, we should build what we can afford with that. That means, let her raise the money. If the community wants it, we'll raise the money, then it'll be a building we can afford. But I don't think we should go into debt for it. So, that's where I'm at on that. I believe I'm going to be a yes on that, as long as I'm understanding correctly that it's going to go into a separate account, should for some reason in the future this project not get approved, that those money, those folks will go back to the appropriate, because I think that's going to help for fundraising, if they know they're putting their dollars in here, for some reason it doesn't move forward, that they would get their funding back.
Yeah, any money they collect, we, we would, first, it would come to you, of course, for approved project, construction budget, operating costs, everything would have to move forward for those funds to even be used.
I'm likely going to support this motion today, because I want to see what you can do, Commissioner Myers.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Miller, I'm all in, you know, we've raised seven point eight million dollars, and it took us a while to get our tax ID. And right now, we have prospective companies that are waiting on us to do the naming rights today, to be able to give us additional dollars. So I'm confident that we can raise the sixteen million dollars that is, that is needed. And the naming rights, that's what it allows, to be able to offer to any company who wants, say, we have an amphitheater, a studio, okay? We have someone already now wants to furnish the entire kitchen, okay, as a part of the naming rights agreement. And so this is why this is so urgent for us to move forward, to vote on today. And I just want to share with us, when Commissioner Les Miller brought this idea up some years ago, because it keeps coming up, and I need to go ahead and, and address this, this was just an idea, and nothing happened. Commissioner Victor Criss brought it up, it was an idea, and nothing happened, and I hope you get my point, okay? I brought it up, I went and found a location and space, and it's a difference. People have ideas, but if the idea doesn't materialize, all you have is an idea. And I want to set the record straight, because I keep hearing it more and more, well, one did this, one did that, but how far did it go? Nowhere, okay? So I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have got a motion on the floor, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Motion carries, six to one. Commissioner Wilson voted no.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Okay, Bonnie?
Thank you. We can move to our ten-thirty item. This is item G3. This is to receive a report on the establishment of a fire rescue peak unit section. And then following this will be item B4, which will be establishing forty-eight new paramedic positions. And Chief Dougherty is here to present item G3.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Dougherty fired chief. First thing I want to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't wish everybody in here a happy Veterans Day next week, that's in the room that's veterans, and our two Commissioners that served in the military, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Cameron Spada. So thank you for your service. So I'm here to speak briefly, as brief as I can anyway, about the Peak Rescue Division. So we'll go ahead and get started. The, so the goal for Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, I think everybody knows, our intention is to serve the citizens in the most efficient, quickest way possible with the best service, and provide the best medical treatment or, and/or fire protection. So, simply stated, that's what this goal of the Peak Rescue Division is here to do. Currently, we are using a third-party BLS provider, or I'm sorry, we have a third-party BLS provider, we have three different private ambulances. That's not a contract, that's an agreement that's been in place for many, many years. Currently, Hillsborough County calls, fire rescue calls for these BLS providers for sixty thousand calls per year. I'll go into the details of why we're looking to maybe address that in a different way. The BLS providers bill patients for transportation services, and the BLS providers have expressed to us over the last few years their concern on not having enough, the bill's not being paid, inconsistent collections, and they're not sure they can continue to provide this service to us. They've, have come to the county administration, they've come to fire rescue and said, without proper funding, and we cannot help fund, that they're not going to be able to continue the service, which leads me to figure out a reason, a way to continue to provide the service for the citizens. So the pros of the BLS system that we have in effect right now is that of a BLS unit, a private ambulance response to the call, it helps us with our capacity and our availability for our more critical units, our advanced life support units. And with that being said, the cons is, it's a lower level of service. Many of the advanced life support calls we go on start off as BLS, and then they turn to ALS. So over twenty-five percent of our calls that are originally dispatched out as a basic life support, turn into an ALS or advanced life support, more critical call. So with that being said, that creates some leak, liability issues for us as well. So we're hoping that this Peak Rescue Division can address some of that. So our third-party BLS providers are made up of three different companies currently, and if you look at this graph, it goes back to 2020 up until 2025. The percentages represent how often they turn down the calls for requests. So in 2020, you can see fifty-six percent of the time that we would call for a BLS provider after we would call, and we'd call all three services, more than fifty-six percent of the time, they would deny the request to provide a BLS unit to that call. As you see in 21, 22, the numbers went up to nearly ninety, over ninety percent, and I will say, two of the three providers were over ninety-eight percent. Only one provider essentially was answering any calls, and that provider now is the only provider we do call, and that's because the, essentially it was a waste of our time to call the other folks, and a waste of resources and response times to call the other two companies, so we're down to one company. And currently, as we look, they're responding forty-three percent of the time. I believe part of the reason that we have seen a decrease in the call down, turn down rate, is because in 2023, we did look at the opportunity of putting a BLS RFP out to see if we could help fund them going to calls, and we, so one of the companies, a major company that we rely on, decided to put more ambulances on the road to see if they could have the resources and capability to do that. And that's the same company that now is telling us that unless we find a way to help fund them, they're not going to be able to respond to those calls. So right now, we're at thirty, forty-three percent turn down rate when we call for BLS. So if you recall, in May of 2024, we started a Peak Rescue Division. We did that, we presented to the board here and to the county administration what I thought may be an opportunity for some improvement, and graciously, you all helped provide us, along with the county administration, the ability to do a trial with a Peak Rescue units. We put five Peak Rescue units in play, they're five days a week, Monday through Friday, currently excluding holidays, and they're staffed twelve-hour shifts with overtime firefighters and paramedics. The challenge for that is, we're one bad storm away, and we know how many times we have storms knock on wood this year, we've been fortunate, but we're one bad storm away that wipes out my overtime budget. The other challenge of funding this through overtime is I'm going to have burnout with my firefighters and paramedics, they're already working a twenty-four hour shift, and then I'm asking them, hey, stick around for another twelve hours and run some more medical calls for me. So we have done that over the past year, and I'm going to show you the benefits of what that data has provided us. So if you look at this graph here, there's a lot of information there. Most important thing I want to highlight and show to you is, this is the first six months of 2023, 2024, and 2025. And if you look, anything that's yellow, orange, or red, that means we are in a bad situation for fire rescue, for unit hour utilization. Essentially, unit hour utilization is how often we're available. We're in critical limits, anything that's in the red, anything that's yellow or orange is we're getting towards that critical point. And what I mean by that is, if you look at the 2023, the top one, forty-one percent of the time, that ambulance in that area was not available to go on a call, because they're already on another call. We, we cannot maintain a fire rescue service like that, I cannot maintain an environment with my staff, my folks running the calls at that volume, so it's detrimental to the citizens and to the workforce. When we put the Peak Rescue Division in, and as I remind you, May of 2024, if you look, we went from almost eighty percent overutilized in 2023, to 2024, down to fifty-five percent overutilized, and that was half a year of doing our Peak Rescue Division. Up until 2025, the first six months were down to thirty-seven percent. And most importantly, if you look at that graph, there's only three units that are above the thirty percent status. That's remarkable, what these peak units have been able to do for us. And I also call it attention in the gray area, that's kind of what the BLS numbers have been over the last three years. If you look, they're very consistent, six percent, seven percent, and seven percent of our calls are BLS. So the BLS call volume is not changing overall in our percentage of numbers, but what's changed is we've put a Peak Rescue units in play, and it's had a overwhelming, successful trial so far, and I'll also speak a little bit about response times. So response times, if you look at the chart here in 2022, it's the beginning of the, the graph, and at the end, on the right side of the graph, is 2025. Remarkably and unbelievably, we have shaved off forty-two seconds in our response times, and that's due to a lot of reasons, not just Peak Rescue units, it's due to a lot, it's a lot that you've helped provide us, that Mrs. Wise and Mr. Hordel have helped provide us, and that's the ability to put different mechanisms in place, such as traffic preemption, that was a project we worked with the county on, how we can get to calls a little bit quicker by clearing intersections. We worked with some operational changes, improved our wall times at the hospitals, essentially how long is our ambulance is sitting at the hospital, we're able to clear them, working with the CEOs in the hospitals on a weekly basis, my rescue chief works with that. And then system of care changes, and I'll remind you what that means, is rather than transversing the whole county and taking patients from one end of the county to the other, we're taking them to the most appropriate hospital based on what their medical condition is. Forty-two seconds, in my world, in our world, in public safety, is a lot of time. Hold your breath for forty-two seconds, and you'll see how valuable seconds are in the, in our business. So minutes, seconds definitely change lives. So the proposal that I have with you today, and I've had with our county administration, is to establish a Peak Rescue Division, or section, under our Rescue Division. So how do we do that? Well, I'm asking for ten peak units, they would be staffed twelve hours a day, seven days a week, including holidays, so three hundred sixty-five days a year, and they would be from seven o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night. That's our peak times for calls, that's also our peak time for traffic on the roadways. And so what we'll see is, not only will it be more available for calls, we'll be able to lessen our UHUs, and our response times, I would say, would, would continue to improve. It's going to take forty-eight folks to do a Peak Rescue Division, and what, those forty-eight folks, we'd have a total of forty-six people in the operation side, that'd mean twenty people in charge of the ten different units, because I would have two shifts, because we, we, we'd be working a forty-two hour work week. So essentially, we'd have twelve hours every day, seven days a week, and that requires two shifts, and then we'd have the twenty-six paramedics. We have a couple extra paramedics compared to rescue lieutenants, and that's for people that are using PTO and taking time off. And then I would also, on the administrative side, add a section chief and a training officer to help manage this division. So we look at the capital costs, the CIP, we're very fortunate that we were able to already purchase six peak units, and that was to replace the peak units we're currently using, because the peak units we're currently using are reserve rescue ambulances, which mean they are not used, they're not, they should not be used for every day, they've already kind of had their service life. So we've already have ordered those, they will arrive here in 2027, October, they've already been funded. What we're asking is for five additional ambulances to make up, round out our ten ambulances that we would need, with one being a reserve unit. That's at a cost of two point three million dollars, one point seven million dollars being the vehicle cost, the capital cost for that, and then also point six million dollars for operational capital equipment, your stretchers, your life packs, all the medical equipment needed for an ambulance. The operating expense would be the twenty-eight positions, the salaries. So to kind of tell you where the cost comparison came in, looking at the BLS RFP versus us doing this ourselves and providing a higher level of service, our salaries would be about four point eight million dollars with salaries and benefits, and then we have another million dollars in operational expenses, that's replacement plan for the eleven ambulances we would have, that's for the fuel, for the medications, for all the equipment that we'd be continuously using. So if we looked at the RFP that came in when we did this in 2023, 2024, it came in at a little over seven million dollars. We would have lost another five to seven million dollars in revenue because of BLS units, the BLS company, whoever would have got that award, would be receiving the revenue for those calls. So it would have cost us between twelve and fourteen million dollars to provide that service, or to contract that service out. This service is going to cost us five point eight million dollars annually, and what I would propose to you, and I'll talk about revenue in just a second, this is the twenty-four hour, I'm sorry, the forty-two hour work week, with three days on one week, and four days on the next, so we kind of already discussed that, that slide kind of jumped in out of order on me. But the revenue, so if you look at the revenue and what we expect to receive from this, what this slide shows you is the thirty thousand calls, I said we sent sixty thousand calls out to BLS, right? They're turning down about fifty percent of them right now. So they get thirty thousand calls, out of those thirty thousand calls, they transport about half of those. So that's fifteen thousand calls. On, on, what we typically get back from a transport is, we bill out eight hundred dollars per call, plus our What we typically get back from a transport is we bill out $800 per call plus our mileage. On average, we receive about $477 in payments from those calls. So for those 15,000 transports, we'd have a little over $7 million in revenue. So essentially, what I'm proposing is to have a budget of almost $6 million a year to return revenue of about $7 million a year. So I think it's a win-win for Hillsborough County citizens, Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, Hillsborough County Government. And I'd also remind you, this is current, this revenue is based off of our current transport fees. And in the upcoming near future, I'll be standing back up here, probably making a request to up our transport fees, because they have not been changed in the last 10 years. So we've worked with a consultant on that as well, but we'll save that for another day. And the last thing I'll say as far as the revenue goes, we will see this revenue returns. It takes about three years, because we're kind of three years in the rears, two to three years in the rears of receiving the monies that we're getting back from our CPE and MCO programs. That's the reimbursement for Medicaid and what have you. So that's kind of where the peak rescue division is. I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions, or turn it back over to Greg.
All right, we're going to board discussion. Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Chief, outstanding work. I think this is just a tremendous thing. And of everything that we've talked about today, this is something, forget about the fact that it actually sounds like it's going to pencil out very nicely financially, this is actually something where it is quantifiable, that lives have been, have been, there are literally people walking around that would not be today because of this 42-second improvement. And you can extrapolate that, I'm going to quote you back, "Our response times will continue to improve," which means that a yes vote is literally a vote to save lives in our community. And I can't think of anything that is more important at our, at our core purpose than to keep our citizens safe. And this is a, something we can quantify, where we actually can say, we will take this step and make, literally keep more people alive in the community than would be otherwise. It is a tremendously impactful program, and I'm thrilled to support it. And I certainly make a motion for, for its approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Willstall and Miller. Commissioner Bowles.
How you doing, Chief? Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this is really a great partnership that's come between labor management, administration, that you all have done a fantastic job. This is one of the things, before I was elected to office, that I kind of was behind in championing, finding creative ways to do the job better and give a better service to our citizens out there, while also giving some relief to our paramedics and firefighters that are in the street. And I think that this exemplifies, and it's a tangible, you know, metric that you can actually say, we are, as Commissioner Cohen says, saving lives with this. And I think that with the ability to reduce possible medication errors, reduce the issues that come with work comp injuries, that kind of thing, by reducing those UHUs for our men and women who are working on the ambulances out there, is a way to certainly improve the level of care and standard of service that we're providing to the community. And I applaud you for doing that. You were doing it on, I'll call it, a shoestring budget, because it was tied to overtime. And who the hell knows what was going to happen in any given year? And, you know, but here we are, doing it. And I think that provided the pilot program of sorts and the data to say, hey, this will make a difference, we will save money, we can go back and capture ad valorem dollars that we're, we're not, you know, putting it into a program that we were, which shouldn't matter in this case in public safety, but we are actually able to do that. I think that, continue up the great work, and you certainly have my support on this.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing what you have in the future, sir.
Thank you, Bill.
Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ditto what Commissioners Cohen and Bowles had to say. Chief, I just want to thank you for your leadership and the new ideas and the vision that you see for your department, and how your staff is working with you to make sure things get done as you present them. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Chair. Chief, I'm just going to echo everything that they said as well. Public safety is my highest priority, and I believe all of ours highest priority. I love the creativity of this program, and I thank you for your efforts in that. But I also have to just add that my staff told me that you have not RSVP'd to the Christmas party. So make sure you get that into me, please, sir.
Let me talk to my staff about that.
Commissioner Cameron Spada.
We'll be there, that's my RSVP.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you, Chief. That was a great presentation, really great plan, lots of lives, I believe, will be saved. And thank you so much for all that you're doing. I'm very happy to support this. Thank you.
All right, so the first motion's on G3. We just accept the report. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
And if we can have a motion on B4.
Move to approve.
Second. Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Bowles, which is to establish positions to create the peak rescue division. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the presentation. Bonnie.
Thank you. Chair Hagan, the next item is item F2. This is your item regarding the employment contract for Julia Mandell as county attorney.
Okay, board members, I'll be brief. As I stated during our last meeting, I feel very strongly that Julia Mandell will make an outstanding county attorney. She's well-versed, knowledgeable, and she's a real fighter who represent the county in this board well. I know that she's already begun laying the groundwork internally for a seamless transition, based on the board's direction during our last meeting. We have a three-year employment contract in our backup that is standard boilerplate contract, that is consistent with Christine's contract, with Bonnie's contract, so there's nothing unusual. So with that, I would like, after we vote, would like to ask her, I know she wants to say a few words, but if we don't have any other comments, we can have a motion.
Move, approve.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to two, seven to zero.
Good morning.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank you, Board of County Commissioners. This is an honor and a privilege to get to serve you, the people of Hillsborough County, the administration, and to work within the county attorney's office. I especially want to thank Christine Beck for being an amazing mentor and friend, and somebody I've worked with for years and has taught me a lot. So again, thank you so much, and I'm very excited to serve you.
Thank you very much, Julia. Okay, Bonnie.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Myers' item, item F3, regarding the county sponsorship of the Tampa Bay Caribbean Carnival.
Commissioner Myers.
Okay, move to approve the 2026 Tampa Bay Caribbean Carnival to be held April 18th and 19th, 2026, at Perry Harvey Park. Funding for this project has already been approved in the FY26 adopted budget.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, next item.
Thank you. The next item is item G1. This is to receive a report regarding the status of impact fee studies and the implication of Senate Bill 1080. Adam Gormley will start. We'll have Chief Doherty and Lisa Ray. And I've asked staff to please keep it pretty quick, so if, I hope I didn't keep it too short for any questions.
All right, you heard her, Adam.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Commissioner's Adam Gormley, Development Services Department. This report on the status of impact fee studies and Senate Bill implications, Senate Bill 1080. I'll briefly touch on the Florida Impact Fee Act, this state statute that governs the assessment and increase of impact fees in Florida, requires that any impact fee must be based on a study using localized data, and that study must be adopted within 12 months of implementation to ensure that that information is current. The study needs to demonstrate that there is a connection or a rational nexus between the fee charge and the impact of new development. It also must demonstrate that there is a rational nexus or benefit to the fee payer from the use of those collected impact fee funds. The Act does require that there's a 90-day notice or waiting period before any new or increased impact fee goes into effect. And it requires that impact fees be increased no more frequently than once every four years. It sets limits on impact fee increases, where impact fees up to, increases up to 25% must be implemented in two equal annual installments. And impact fee increases greater than 25%, up to 50% must be implemented in four equal annual installments. There is a provision currently in the Impact Fee Act for impact fee increases greater than 50%. It requires a study demonstrating that there are extraordinary circumstances necessitating the fee increase, requires two publicly noticed workshops dedicated to that extraordinary circumstance, and at least two-thirds vote of the governing body. These requirements will change as of January 1, 2026, due to Senate Bill 1080. And those changes are that if the fee isn't going to increase greater than 50%, it must be done by a unanimous vote of the governing body. It further provides that if an impact fee has not been increased within the past five years, there cannot be an increase greater than 50%. I'll touch briefly on the status of current studies. There are two studies that are completed that Chief Doherty and Ms. Ray will speak to. Those, should the board desire to move forward with those, there are options for how to move forward that are in the report. First, touch on mobility fees. This was last updated in 2020. The study was dated 2020. It's currently in the process of being updated. We have a consultant on board that is updating the study, and we're expecting that to be ready for, get a draft study in early 2026, and that we would come to the board in spring with workshop on the mobility fees. School impact fees are being, there's another study going on that's being managed by the school district. The last study was done in February 2020. Said the study is currently being reviewed by the school district, have seen a draft of that since the publishing of this agenda item, and we're waiting on the school board's action on that and any, any requests that may make to the board regarding that study. Park impact fees were last updated in April 2020. We anticipate bringing on a consultant to update that study in early 2026, spring of '26. And lastly, I have stormwater non-ad valorem assessments. These are technically not mobile, excuse me, impact fees. They are special assessments, but they have the same function as a, as a impact fee. The latest study on that was done in July of 2019, and it is currently being updated and anticipated to come to the board in March or April of '26 for a workshop on proceeding. So I will hand it over to Chief Doherty.
All right, Jason Doherty, Hillsborough County Fire Chief. We'll make it as quick as we can. So fire rescue, current, we are using the incremental expansion method. If you, what Adam said was, starting in January, we're not, we will, with the changes, we would not qualify for the more, be able to raise the fees more than that. So that's where we're sticking to the incremental base fee. We look at a quantitative and qualitative approach. Our quantitative approach is current infrastructure and the cost, and then our qualitative is based off of our service delivery. The last thing we look at is standards-driven. What does that mean? That's related to NFPA 1710 and our deployment and response times and our ISO ratings. So we have to take all three of those things into effect for the incremental approach. Our issue right now is our impact fees by no way fund stations based on the number of homes or residences and the cost of stations currently, the way they sit. And we'll discuss a little bit why that is. So right now, currently, it would take 35,000 homes to be able to build a fire station in Hillsborough County at a $12 million cost. That's about what the cost of Hillsborough County Station with the capital resources there, the equipment, what have you. So we're proposing to raise the impact fees with the incremental method. Right now, 2.2 residents per home. So if you look at that, that's, we're serving over 77,000 people with one fire station. What my standard says is we, what the standards we abide by, we should be having one station per about 18,000 to 20,000 residents, which would equal about 9,000 homes. So currently, based on our collections of single residential, it was around $335 a home. What that means is we'd have to have, like I said, 35,000 homes. So what we're proposing is to, the 50% is what the law is now over four years, so 12 and a half percent per year, that would raise us to $502 at the end of the four years. And based on today's dollars, would they be, would take us from 35,000 homes to 24,000 homes. Not quite where we need to be still, so a long ways to go. How did we get in that situation? Well, the impact fees have not changed in the last six years with Hillsborough County Fire Rescue, and they've only changed one time in the last 30 years. So that's why we have a challenge of what our impact fees we're collecting versus building stations. The proposed increase maintains the current service level. So by law, we, we can't catch up with past deficiencies unless you go to a different methodology. A change to the plan-based methodology, if it's desired, we would be able to do that four years down the road and with a unanimous vote, and also because we would have raised the fees in the last four years. Regardless of the methodology, just keep in mind that impact fees only help with the capital expenses and not the operational expenses. Thank you. Any questions? All right, thanks so much.
Good morning.
Good morning. Lisa Ray, Director of Water Resources. Thank you for having us here today. So the last time the water resources impact fees were increased was in 2020. Since then, there's been extraordinary growth throughout our county. And as you can see in this graphic, over 115,000 people have moved to our county. Now, there is a typo in the printed version. The 22% that I have on my graphic here is the correct number. So I do want to correct that at this time. The other thing that has been a key driver in our need to increase impact fees is the increase in the cost of construction. As you can see on the slide, back around 2019, we were able to build new wastewater capacity, that's plants, pipes, lift stations, for approximately $10 per gallon. The cost that we are seeing now for our new one water plant is closer to $40 per gallon. That's a tremendous increase that really is due to the growth in our system, which is what impact fees cover. Additionally, we have several of our plants that are at near full capacity. And so we need to be able to provide that additional capacity as people move into our area. Now, our last impact fee increase occurred in 2020. You can see the current rates on your screen. Up in the northwest area, which does not have the same level of growth occurring, we would be proposing about a 31% increase, going from 48,014 to 6,298. However, the south-central area is different. That's where all of the growth is occurring, as all of you are fully aware. In that area, we have really two options that are possible. In order to have full-cost recovery in the south-central area, our impact fees would need to go from 5,865 to 13,270 per house, per residential unit. We do have the option, per Florida law, to use extraordinary circumstances if we're able to meet the timeline. However, we also have the 50% rule, which is what you see on the right-hand side of the table. We would propose to implement this based on the 50% rule as, in a phased-in approach that would occur over the four-year period, starting within 90 days of approval from the board. We would be looking to come back to the board for approval of a public hearing, and then from there, seek your permission to increase these fees. And thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And we're going to board discussion. Commissioner Bowles.
Impact fees, my perspective is that, you know, of course, when we're, it's more like a pass-through. And I know that it could be perceived as, you know, some kind of other tax out there. But these are user fees in a way that they have direct, we're using these dollars for pulling them in, they get passed through to the consumer who's using that, that service that goes back to sidewalks, roads, and infrastructure. And in some of these cases have been grossly neglected over the years, considering, if you use the analogy, or the example that was provided, that prior to 2019, it had been 30 years prior for fire impact fees being increased. One of the concerns I had, and why I asked for this report to be brought forward, and it may, I think it was going to be pieced it may, I think it was going to be piecemealed out anyway, was that with Senate Bill ten eighty, we are going to be hamstrung that any kind of increase we make beyond the fifty percent, if we deemed has to be, meet the benchmark of seven zero, and I feel that certainly that's going to be a high benchmark for any, certainly, board to reach in this state, and that's probably why it was set as such by the legislature. What I would like to see, and I think we're on task to do that, and I had talked to Director Gormley about this, was that in the future, that we have some kind of tickler that provides that every four years, we are starting this process. It doesn't mean we have to do it, we have to start it. We cannot be worried about if there's a CIT referendum coming up, if there's an election coming up, or, you know, who's running or what, because no matter what, in my opinion, there's always going to be a storm on horizon. We're always going to be worried about what may come, and we can make that tough decision to either pass those through or not at that time. So I would like to certainly make a motion that we approve the report as provided.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bowles to approve the report. Second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Willstall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions on the timing of this end of December, and then also if today would be an appropriate time to make a motion. I'm getting a head nod on something. Commissioners, as, as all of you know, I have been unapologetically pro-property rights on my time on this board. I'm not pro-growth, I'm not anti-growth, I'm not pro-developer, I'm not anti-developer. I am pro-property rights, and I am a pro-free market capitalist. And with that being said, you might recall that I was the dissenting vote on the rate increase. The only reason that I was the dissenting vote on the rate, the past rate increase is because I had the revenue expert come up and admit publicly that fifty percent of that rate that was being imposed was for new customers being anticipated. I know that it's a high bar, and I would be remiss to not at least try for it today to get that unanimous vote, but I do believe that it's incumbent upon this board to exact the full impact fee that our revenue study has demonstrated, because it's not appropriate for families. I believe that Commissioner Myers has been in this county for at least sixty-something years. I believe that Commissioner Hagan is multi-generational. I believe that Commissioner Miller is multi-generational, and I don't believe that it is appropriate for current residents to continue to incur the burden of new customers. I believe that they have the right to be here, but I believe that they also equally have the right to pay their share of burden for our community, and that not be exacted down the line to those of us that have already lived here. For those reasons, I believe it pertinent to at least attempt, I would be remiss to not at least attempt to try for that unanimous bar, specifically because Board Policy, Chapter three, three, one, is our water and wastewater financial policy. This had not been amended until, from two thousand and four until I amended it until, in October the eighteenth of twenty twenty-three, and it specifically says that the funds to expand the utility system to service new customers shall be obtained through capacity fees, which is exactly what this is, and I would just like one of our experts to confirm my insinuation that if we only approve the fifty percent, that the remaining sixteen percent will be, have to be captured by the existing customers that already live in Hillsborough County.
Hi, Commissioner. Thank you, Lisa Ray. Yes, we have very large projects going on that have very high capital expenses right now, and we are going to have to fund those one way or the other. Without the impact fee increases, those expenses do fall on the backs of the rate payer.
Okay, well, look, the costs of everything were just from utter mismanagement from two presidents, not just one, during COVID, and it has escalated the costs to do business without reason. So for those reasons, I make the motion to direct county staff to set the appropriate two public hearings and impose the full sixty-six percent rate increase. That was studied by, is that good?
I'll second.
You need me to change it before I finish?
Commissioner Cameron Clark, Sidney County Attorney. It's workshops. There is ultimately an ordinance adoption public hearing, but the statute requirement, I think you're referring to, just says workshops.
But just, okay.
So two publicly noticed workshops, followed by an amendment, an ordinance public hearing.
I motion to set two publicly noticed workshops, followed by an amendment hearing at the full sixty-six percent rate increase found by our revenue expert. Is that good?
And this is for water?
For water.
Water, wastewater, right now.
Yes.
All right, so this is a substitute, is this a substitute motion, I assume, by Commissioner Willstall, Second Commissioner Miller, Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. I am happy to be supportive, and let me just say, you made a statement about these impact fees were never touched to twenty nineteen, and that's absolutely accurate, but I just want to point out that when Commissioner Myers and I joined the board in twenty twenty, one of the first things that we did was start playing catch-up on some of these impact fee backlogs, and, and so it's not something that the people sitting at this dais today have been ignoring.
I didn't, I didn't, I don't think I said that.
No, I just wanted to be, I want to be clear about it. Oh, maybe Commissioner Bowles said it. I just want to be clear about it. And the second thing, I'm a Hillsborough County native also, and I don't think it's my, fair for my family to bear the burden either, so just want to point that out.
Okay, we, so we got a substitute motion. Commissioner Willstall, Second Commissioner Miller, please accord your vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, from a procedural standpoint, in order to have this increase over fifty percent, we will need to have the public hearing this calendar year before January first, twenty twenty six, and what would suggest is that the item to set the public hearing could be on the November twelfth land use meeting, and then the public hearing itself could be held at the December regular meeting.
Okay, that sounds great.
And I'm sorry, one other thing. The full recovery is greater than sixty-six percent, but as long as you use the full recovery language, we're good. Thank you.
Okay, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay.
We had a few items polled, Commissioner Willstall, A seven and A eight. I believe you said you didn't need a presentation, so if somebody could just...
Move approval?
Second.
Both.
Okay, so your motion by Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers for A seven and A eight, please accord your vote. Commissioner Willstall?
One brief comment. I just wanted to point out, the level of volatility that we've got on certain issues from certain groups, they're not here today as we approve items for two hundred Muslim women, but I could guarantee you that if it was two hundred Jewish women for good, that we would have the most volatile crowd in here, and I find that very disturbing, and why I don't support funding these social issues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'm going to motion a second. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda voted no.
Next item?
The next item is also polled. It was item A twenty-four regarding the approval of policy for events and parades, and Commissioner Willstall, you polled this item as well.
Commissioner Willstall?
Yeah, I mean, in, in the item, I don't know if there were other commissioners that asked what we're doing for other parades, but I, I fully believe that this, this policy is going to box out long, very beloved parades, mostly in the unincorporated area, definitely in Ruskin, definitely in Brandon, maybe in Plant City, probably in Carrollwood and Lutes, and then, and you see that we extraordinarily fund fully a quarter million dollars to one, a variety to some others, and, you know, we keep using the word equity until these things come up, and then it's out the window, and it's because that's what's good for me. So there's, there's no way that, there's got to be a different way to make it to where safe. I mean, I know personal accountability in America seems to be out the window, but I mean, there's got to be a way to make it safe for people, and, you know, I'm, I'm the, the low tax commissioner, but I'm certainly not the no-fund commissioner, so I don't support this. I think we have to, to find a different way, Mr. Chair.
I completely agree. I, I thank you for pulling it. I, I know I opposed this when it came up initially. I support having a uniform process and, and procedure, but I'm not going to support sticking it to parade organizers, particularly since we're talking about eight parades at a total of twenty-six thousand dollars. So I'm not going to support it. I don't know what the rest of the board's going to do, but I think it, it particularly impacts our smaller parades such as Lutes. This is a neighborhood parade. It's not Brandon or Plant City, that are much, much larger ones, but as a whole, I'm not going to support it, so. Commissioner Cohen?
So let me just, first of all, it is true that, that in the, many of the parades take place in the incorporated areas, and that's not affected by this. But, you know, all, all I think the staff is trying to do here is to provide some safety and, and other uniform best practices to, to keep things under control, and my question would be, why can't we find the twenty-six thousand dollars somewhere in order to actually do the, do the regulations? Make, make it safe and, and make sure that we're, we're appropriately protecting everybody, but find a way to pick up the, the additional cost. It just does not seem to be very much money, and it would, it would solve everybody's problem.
All right, so what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I, I was wondering if perhaps that was a question of the, to the administrator of how we might be able to solve the, solve the problem.
Well, I know in the backup reference, being able to apply for the grant or something, but I just think that's an, an additional step that really, I don't think needs to be required, but Bonnie, if you want to...
How about if we bring this back and see if there's something else we can do? You do have a policy that says that you're supposed to recover the costs, but let us look at that as well. How about that?
Okay, so do we need a motion to continue it, or?
Move to continue.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Miller, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, next item?
Future discussion items.
Any Commissioner, have a, Commissioner, I don't...
Yes, I have one.
Commissioner Myers?
Can we get, Bonnie, can you bring back an update on the Mosley project at the December seventeenth meeting? Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen? Did nothing? Commissioner Miller? Did you have anything? Commissioner Willstall?
Really briefly, almost two years ago, I directed staff to work with me on the capital improvement program, and it's an exhausting dataset. It took them a while to get it to me, but I appreciate the difficulty. This dataset's large and it's complex. It's really, it's been actually really challenging to consume, but in light of recent items that have come to the board, and one of the original reasons I pulled this, it's going to re-energize and expedite my energy on, for the first time, going through this CIP and cleaning it up. I think we have a serious challenge and issue with legacy money being left in here and then re-appropriated to other projects without the community's insights. So I would like the, the county attorney's budget and management office, excuse me, the county administrator's budget and management office to, to come back to my office and continue working on fully extrapolating revenue sources within the CIP that have not been more than fifty percent funded through the general reserves-CW, county match, general reserves-UA, ARP, other, MSTU, impact fees, and mobility fees, and gas taxes. We're basically excluding the enterprise funds from that, out of the CIP, and we'll just start with this dataset that you've already worked with me on. Thank you.
Bonnie, you follow all that? Okay. Commissioner Bowles?
Yeah, we, I kind of let it slide, but I had two motions I wanted to present that were directly related to the AA ACC, AA ACC, sorry.
My apologies.
No, 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 and we just kind of, I know we're all in a rush to get out of here, and I'm in a rush too, but I'd like to bring a motion forward that basically the BOs, we authorize staff to develop a phased implementation plan for the AA ACC, consistent with current available funding and projected capital requirements for our future consideration.
I'll second.
Thank you.
So, sorry, this is future discussion items, so we don't usually vote, so you want to go back to that item from before, or just bring something back in the future?
Can you just, it might be cleaner.
Can I direct you to, let me put it this way, I'd like to direct you to have staff bring forward a phased implementation, implementation plan for the development of that project.
For us to consider.
For us to consider at a future date, as soon as, sooner than later than. Second, my second thing would also be that, that you also work with all relevant stakeholders to provide a comprehensive funding strategy for the same center with the objective of securing complete funding for the building itself within the next two years, at which port, the point, at which point the board can reevaluate that future project.
Did you follow it?
I think so. I think it sounds like one staff, a staff report that could address these items.
Staff report on phasing.
I guess so.
Yeah.
Because, and it would have to come back for the board to consider. Can we work with you on what that means exactly?
Sure. But whatever you do, it'll come back to the board for us to...
Yes, it would absolutely come back to the board, yes. You're not voting on anything at this time.
Okay.
I, I wanted to keep in the spirit of what I had talked about, that if we don't put some timelines and hold some accountability with these funds coming in, that it will, one, be able to put something grown out of the ground, and then also allow us to, with the phasing component, and then put a two-year timeline on it to say, you know, at some point, we got to do something.
Okay. We don't have board discussion during future issues, so any other item? If not, adjourn.
Okay.